We will now call the May 6th Board Meeting to Order, Mr. Gator. Please call the board.
Representing Education District 1, Ms. Katie Howard.
Present.
Representing Education District 2, Ms. Eretta Balda.
Present.
Representing Education District 3, Dr. Ken Zeph.
Present.
Representing Education District 4 and Board Vice Chair, Ms. Jennifer McDonald.
Present.
Representing Education District 5 and Board Chair, Ms. Erica Mitchell. And she is here with us virtually. Um, she's on our virtual side. Uh, representing Education District 6, Ms. Ishay Collins. Representing Education District Head Large Seat 7, Mr. Alfred Sherry Brooks.
Present.
Representing Education District Head Large Seat 8, Ms. Cynthia Risco Brown.
Present.
Representing Education District Head Large Seat 9, Ms. Jessica Johnson.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a moment.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the April 9, 2024 meeting minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second?
Second. The motion has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the May 6, 2024 Board Meeting Agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Or any opposed? Not all. Motion carries. Dr. Battle, please bring the work session out.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We have five presentations today. First, we will have a presentation by Achieve Atlanta, presented by Dr. Cheryl Watson-Harris. Next, we will have a student calendar presentation recommendation for 2025, 26, 26, 27, and 27, 28 by Ms. Yolanda Brown, Chief Academic Officer, and Mr. Tom Mine, Program Director for the Division of Academics. Next, we will have a strategic plan update, which would consist of our family engagement update, provided by Mrs. Keisha Copeland, Ex-Home Secretary Director for Family Engagements. Following that update, we will have our strategic plan update, review of our district finance rooms, proposed budget adjustments, and review of the tentative FY '25 budget adoption update, presented by Dr. Lisa Bracken, our Chief Financial Officer. And our final presentation is on student outcome-focused governance, our SOF chief. Today's presentation is on Goal 1, Literacy and Control Goal 1.1 and 1.2. Dr. Watson-Harris, we're now ready for your presentation.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Erica Mitchell and the esteemed members of the Atlanta Public Schools Board of Education. Uh, good afternoon to Interim Superintendent Battle. And thank you so much for this opportunity to discuss Achieve Atlanta's initiatives, our collaboration with the district, and updates on our strategic plan. We recognize that the national discourse surrounding the value of a college education, and our goal in this presentation today is to describe why Achieve Atlanta's mission is so particularly important in these times. We also aim to provide clarity amidst the uncertainty many of our young people face, offering them the support to navigate their important futures. At Achieve Atlanta... Is this working? Well, while we're doing that... Oh, wonderful. Thank you. At Achieve Atlanta, our vision is bold. We envision a future where race and income no longer determine one's post-secondary success. Our mission is clear: to assist Atlanta public school students in accessing, affording, and earning post-secondary credentials. And we are, we see ourselves as integral partners in achieving your board goals 3 and 4: post-secondary preparedness and college and career readiness. While there is an ongoing debate about the value of a college degree, at Achieve Atlanta, we firmly believe that whether it's a four-year, two-year, or technical program, this remains the most effective pathway to success for our students. As someone who was among the first in my family to earn a post-secondary degree, I understand the challenges students and families face in navigating the college application process. And at Achieve Atlanta, we are here to support our students every step of the way. A differentiator at Achieve Atlanta is that we aren't just focused on getting our students into college. We're focused on getting our students into college and then seeing them as scholars through college. Achieve Atlanta supports the high school students across the college pipeline, and we do so in partnership with several nonprofits and institutions in addition to Atlanta Public Schools. One of our core values is intentional collaboration. And on the access side of our work, we bring two strong community organizations to Atlanta Public Schools. We recognize that high school counselors cannot do this work alone. Many of our high school counselors have caseloads that make it very difficult to provide that one-to-one support for our scholars. So we do this by adding additional capacity to APS. And we add this, we do this by funding an organization, College Advising Corps, to provide technical assistance in college application process, financial aid, and the college selection process for our students. We partner, we also partner with APS to fund the ONE Goal program in several high schools. And ONE Goal targets students with GPAs and provides a credit-bearing elective to a cohort of juniors and seniors to build college knowledge and successfully enroll them in college. And we're really excited about the additional funding that we offer to APS with those partners. So as we think about our partnership, we just want to dive a little bit more into this, the infrastructure of our partnership. Most of you know that in 2014, Achieve Atlanta grew out of a community of stakeholders, including leaders from the Atlanta Public Schools. This grew out of a recognition that too many students in APS were not going on to college. And more importantly, even fewer were earning any type of degree or credential. At that time in 2014, only 1 in 7 entering 9th graders were expected to earn a post-secondary credential within seven years of high school graduation. And what we find is that while we've had a lot of impact, which I'm going to go into, that the need of the partnership still very much exists and continues. And the work that we do, again, at Achieve Atlanta, it's very important to us that it is integrated deeply in the work and the goals that you have identified, and the vision of the board and superintendent to ensure that students are prepared for life after high school. Our aim is to provide a seamless pathway of supports for students from high school into and through college. And so what does this look like in practice? During the junior year of high school, for all high school students in APS, we begin exposing them to college via tours, as well as research to find the very best school. As you know, we all have a goal of having our scholars apply to, excuse me, our students apply to at least three colleges. And during the junior year, we begin to expose them to the colleges where we think they can be most successful and the ones to which we would want them to apply. During the 12th grade, our focus through our partnership, again, with the College Advising Corps and ONE Goal, we ensure that our students receive financial aid, complete at least three college applications, and apply for the Achieve Atlanta Scholarship. After graduation, which we know all the graduations are coming up and we're looking forward to attending, uh, we also work with those scholars to reduce the summer melt and ensure that they actually go to college in the fall. But beyond the scholarship, we support our students with navigating college life and having a sense of belonging. We know that many of the students who apply and are, become Achieve Atlanta scholars are, many of them are the first person in their family to attend college. We assist them once they get there with on-campus coaching, mental health assistance, emergency grants, and a solid next step if there are food or housing insecurities. We have an Achieve Atlanta scholar who's currently working as an intern in our office. And some of you met her at our community breakfast, Kanaya. And she gave me permission to share how when she first arrived on her college campus, she felt out of place. While other students lived on campus and could roll out of bed and go to their classes, she had to travel by public transportation to make her early morning classes, or sometimes late morning classes. And she was reluctant to ask for help because she didn't know who she could trust. She felt like somewhat of an imposter on her campus. She questioned if college was really for her. But she credits her Achieve Atlanta advisor and ambassador for reminding her of her strengths, her talents, and her worth. She was reminded that while she came from a low-income background and was the first person in her family to attend college, her circumstances did not define her, but made her a strong example for others. Kanaya now serves on several student leadership roles and recently was invited by her university president to present to their Board of Trustees on the importance of investing in first-generation students. This is the type of APS Achieve Atlanta scholar that is produced out of our partnership. We also encourage our students and we support them and our scholars in taking advantage of all that college has to offer. With less focus on how to pay for college, our scholars are free to participate in extracurricular activities and other opportunities on campus. Another scholar, Antonio Pierce, shared that he was accepted and had the opportunity to participate in a study abroad program in Zambia and Ghana. And while doing these study abroad programs, he learned a lot about peace and how different societies encourage peace. And as a result, he has created his own mentorship program servicing students in K-12. So again, these are the type of scholars and leaders that are produced out of this partnership. And while the services we're providing are important, and we have so many inspirational stories, we also want to talk about the infrastructure that we've built to support this work. And I believe that the partnership between Atlanta Public Schools and Achieve Atlanta can really serve as a model, a true model of how nonprofits and traditional districts can work to have an incredible impact. I'd like to highlight two structures that we've built over the last eight years of our partnership. The first is the College Access Working Group. And this group is comprised from representatives from Achieve Atlanta, College Advising Corps, ONE Goal, and several departments within APS, including the Counseling Department, CTAE, NDATA and Information. And they serve as the collective management for the College Access Program across the district. So there's really a very well-coordinated approach to the work. I'd like to just take a moment to name some of the leaders in the district who have served on this working group. And we consider our partners in having the impact we've had with our scholars. Dr. Dwan Freeman, Ms. Maria Grosvenor, Dr. Monique Bryant. And we'd also like to recognize Dr. Matt Smith and Ms. Yolanda Brown for their leadership in the partnership over the last several years. The second structure is the College Access Team. As I've mentioned before, at Achieve Atlanta, we recognize that we cannot do this work alone. And the same goes in high schools. Numerous adults may work with a student on many aspects of the college exposure application and acceptance process. And adults may bring different expertise to the work. So we've created a structure so that these different adults that are having touchpoints with our scholars can have an opportunity and a place to communicate and plan strategically. These opportunities have made for, again, a deeper impact of our work with our scholars. At Achieve Atlanta, we are truly data-driven. And while, again, we have many aspirational stories that show the impact of our work, we'd also like to share some hard numbers to demonstrate the incredible work that we've been doing and our impact. In our first years, less than half of APS seniors applied to 3-plus colleges. Last year, we had 79% of APS seniors applied to college. At our founding, only half of Atlanta Public School seniors applied for federal financial aid for college. And last year, our data showed that 71% of seniors completed the FAFSA. We all recognize the impact that COVID-19 had on our school system. Chart demonstrates that our scholar count declined during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. But what you see is that we quickly rebounded in 2023 with our second-largest cohort to date. And as you have celebrated your increases in your graduation rate, we also see increases in the number of college enrollments. We're proud of the impact that we've made to date. And some of those big numbers include serving over 5, close to 6,000 Achieve Atlanta scholars. That's over 6,000 students that we serve in partnership with Atlanta Public Schools. We have our scholars attending over 381 different colleges across the country. 94% of our scholars identify as Black or Latinx. We've invested $57 million in scholarships paid out through 2024. 96% of the students are eligible for the Pell Grant. And 76 have a EFC of zero. And then a third of the graduating APS school seniors have become scholars. So that is the depth of our partnership. A third of your graduating seniors go on to become part of this ecosystem. Our impact, again, to date, has been validated not only by those numbers, but by an external study with Georgia Policy Lab that shows that our students are continuing to graduate college at much higher rates than their similar peers. And this is important for us because our work, again, is not to help students get into college, but make sure that they have the wealth of supports so that they persist and earn that post-secondary credential. Something else we wanted to note is that because our scholarship is open to students across a broad academic spectrum, we support many students that would not qualify for the HOPE Scholarship. And as you can see here, that the focus or the increase in persistence are concentrated among students with a GPA between 80 and 90. And these are students who might, most likely, would not have been eligible for the HOPE Scholarship. But we show that by adding this additional support, that that group of students is persisting and doing well. Another very important data point you want to lift up is that scholars, Achieve Atlanta scholars are earning their degree with less debt than the national, excuse me, the state average. And we know that that's extremely important as we think about their ability to be upwardly mobile, that they're not just graduating, but they're graduating with a healthy amount of debt to begin their lives. And so, looking towards the future... This is a big one. I think no doubt you have heard about the large rollout of the federal financial aid form known as the FAFSA. The application is critical to APS students to access federal funds for college, including the Pell Grant. And we have known about the changes to the FAFSA and the delayed opening since last summer and developed plans to support APS students and professionals in, to manage the changes. And we've done this by adjusting timelines, we're almost done here, providing staff with line-by-line training, securing access to national experts, providing technical support through a professional portal and more. But what we also know is that the better FAFSA, the plans and intentions behind that has not transpired this year. And that we have many, many students who would be left behind. But given the importance of the FAFSA to unlocking funds for college, we moved up our supports this year. And we have roughly about 47% of APS students that have completed the FAFSA at this time. But we've been doubling down, sending people out to APS to make sure that students have every, every opportunity to complete the FAFSA, and those numbers have been jumping. So just in conclusion, because I think my time is up here, is that the last thing that we want you to know that we're working on as we're thinking about the year ahead is also our big bet, as you've heard, has been to get our scholars, our students into college and through college. And we thought that that post-secondary credential would be enough to set them on their pathway to upward mobility. But learning that we have to incorporate more awareness around career, and that's something that you're going to hear about in the coming days. The last thing, just to leave you with a quote from one of our former students from APS who's now at Georgia Tech. He said that "Achieve Atlanta played a pivotal role in helping me to navigate Georgia Tech by serving as a support system and ensuring that I was put in the right place to succeed. As an Achieve Atlanta Campus Ambassador, I also helped bridge the gap between APS and Georgia Tech for other students. I really appreciate the program and all it has done for me." So it's beautiful to see that our scholars are not only recognizing the support and how it's helped them achieve their dreams, but reaching back and paying it forward to the scholars that are coming behind. Thank you so much, again, for inviting us. I do have some colleagues with me that I'm going to invite up at this time to respond to any questions or commendations or thoughts that you have about the APS Achieve Atlanta partnership.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take two questions, but this is such a great way to kick off everything. There's a lot of wonderful data that I've shared. Thank you for doing that. I'll start down here. Ms. Akira? Eretta? Thank you, everyone who picked here, two more seconds. Thanks, thank you. Okay. All right. Dr. Zeph?
Thank you, Dr. Watson-Harris. Well, so much, so much good stuff to be excited about here. The debt reduction, the increase in persistence. I want to make sure that, I know it's only a small boat there, but we're so thankful to our friends at Whitehead for leaning into this. This would not happen without them, the Community Foundation, but especially the leadership of Whitehead. I'm going to ask you a question off-accelerated, but first, can you introduce your team? They're working hard. I see them over there. You want to just call out their names?
Good afternoon. Corinne Scholey, I'm Vice President for College Access. Nice to see you. I'm Femi Johnson, the Senior Director of College Access.
Hey, everyone. I'm Svetlana Vebek, Senior Director of Data.
Excellent, excellent. So my question, so much good stuff here. FAFSA's been a problem. You called it out. We're 10 points, 15 points behind where we want to be. What's the plan for school runs in two and a half weeks? What happens? How do we get to kids over the summer? How do we reach them? How do we get them across the finish line here?
All right, thank you. And so, one thing just to note is that while we are down, we are performing much better than others across the country. So I think we're continuing to remind our team, as well as counselors in the high schools, that, you know, to keep up the good work, because there are many students who do not benefit from the support they have here in APS. What we're doing this summer, we are going to be hiring a number of part-time positions. So folks who understand the FAFSA, many of them have already been working on this throughout the year. So we're going to be hiring them this summer to support students. We have worked with Dr. Dwan Freeman to get access to the summer school, high school sites, so that they can be based in the high schools to be able to respond to families in person, as well as reaching out to them virtually. We also have, when students apply for our scholarship, we're essentially building a relationship with them. So we have a group of students who we can support one-on-one just from our team because they're sort of already in our system, if you will. So for those students, we're also able to provide them support to make sure that even if they think they've got the FAFSA in, that, you know, we're working with them to make sure it's complete, everything is sent to the colleges, having finished up their process.
Hi, thank you. Really, that's all I have to say is thank you for what you do for the scholars and the families. And I'm proud to say that my daughter is now one of the Achieve Atlanta graduates.
Just real quickly, again, thank you, equally my colleagues. And then thank you for slide number six, calling out our goals and that important alignment, especially with our college and career readiness and about a graduate goal. And look forward to seeing you all, you know, what comes out of your work with our team here at APS as we work to hone in on our goals, to really identify our students' needs and what we need to do more of, and maybe slightly differently. And you talk about that with pivot with career and really embedding that in the beginning, especially like even for middle scores, to know why this is important and so many ways to get a degree, a certification. So thank you for that, that shift that you all are already starting. And of course, the work you've been doing. And really looking forward to the partnership continuing, especially around our goals and college and career readiness. Thank you all. Thank you, Cynthia.
Yeah, let me just add my thanks as well. When we started this back in 2015, it was with great excitement and appreciation of the potential for the change it could be for our kids. And you have all lived into that and more. Two questions. The first one, and this is really for those who are listening, how do students become a part of Achieve Atlanta? How do you get into the program? And what can we do from the APS side to increase the numbers of students that become Achieve Atlanta scholars?
So we have a few requirements to be Achieve Atlanta scholar, the first being a 75 GPA. The second being that they need to be an Atlanta Public School student for junior and senior year. We do make a few exceptions there. And so, our application always opens February 1st. We invite all students to apply, even if they're not sure about their GPA. We take first semester GPA, so if there's some dips, we're good with that. But we encourage all students to apply once they are in our system. As Corinne said, we're much able, we're able to like reach out to them, provide them assistance on why they may not have completed their application. This year, we'll be supporting students without support. So we reach out to as many students and encourage as many students to apply as possible. Just ignore the buzz.
I'm sorry, those might...
What's going on there? But we won't, we won't hold you to two minutes, I promise.
Okay, thank you. Is that window for applications still open?
Yes, the window is still open until May 31st. And we are currently talking internally about how we can support students that may got tripped up in the FAFSA, to support them over the summer with applications as well.
Good. So anybody who's listening out there, if you're not a part of the program...
Get with the program.
And then the other question is, what can, is there anything else that we hear on the board or within APS can do to support and enhance your work further?
Thank you so much for that question. And opportunities like today are great examples, making sure that we're lifting up this opportunity, celebrating it, communicating it as far and widely as we can so that scholars know and families know that this is an opportunity available to them. Even with the, we had a scholar night last Wednesday night. And we have another one coming up this Wednesday. If you'd like to come, we'll send you an invitation as well. But we all got on the phone and called, I had about 47 students on my list to call just to say, come out. So when you're in your travels and you're speaking to your constituents to make sure that you're lifting up the Achieve Atlanta Scholarship and program and circulating our information if they have additional questions or want to learn more. Thank you so much.
We also look forward to continuing to support your board goals in any way that... We also look forward to continuing to support your board goals in any way that we can do that even more formally. We'd be excited to do so. Thank you. Thanks, Lani and Jasmine.
I mean, of course, I know a lot about the work you're doing in Atlanta, but I was just curious super quickly about the, the college affordability work and what, what you all are considering. Because what we've heard through our board meetings, students are asking for some of that information much earlier than their junior and senior years. So just curious how you all are thinking about integrating that work in your time.
Some of the work we've already started is really thinking about senior year, making sure that students understand their financial aid packages, senior awareness. And also junior year, sort of helping families start to understand what it means, what all these terms mean. I think as Dr. Rosso Harris alluded to, you know, we're embarking on a new strategic plan. And so. Part of that is thinking about what are the gaps, you know, who can fill those? And thinking about when students might need some of this information earlier. I mean, we've been around for eight years and. We know that this, these conversations don't just start junior year. So that is something that we'll put up.
All right, thank you so much. And you can wrap up your days really if you are actually changing lives for people and ideas to members. So thank you for the work and thank you for your inspiration.
Thank you again.
Ms. Brown and Mr. Munn, we're now ready for your presentation.
Good afternoon. Board Chair Mitchell, Vice Chair McDonald, Atlanta Board of Education members and Interim Superintendent Battle. The Division of Academics is excited to share the recommendations for the APS student calendars for school years twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. This process has truly been a labor of love and collaboration with a myriad of district stakeholders in alignment. With our APS Board Guard Rail Number Two Stakeholder Engagement. Mr. Thomas Munn, Program Director for the Division of Academics, has led this work with the support from the APS Office of Strategy and Engagement. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Munn to present our process and formal recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Oh, wait a second for the presentation to come up. Would you like me to wait? Who do you want me to be? Okay, I'm surprised. First of all, we have a. I didn't see it saved in that file.
We're going to enjoy hearing from you now as we wait for that presentation to pop up. We have it, we have it. It's online and we have access to it.
Okay.
And we're, you know, how exciting this information is. So we don't want to further delay and any second it's going to pop up and you can just jump in wherever that is.
Right, great, thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Brown. Board Chair Mitchell, Vice Chair McDonald, Board Members and Interim Superintendent Dr. Battle, the purpose of this presentation today is to present. Is to present the APS Student Calendar Recommendations for School Years Twenty-five, Twenty-Six, Twenty-Six, Twenty-Seven, and Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Eight. The goal is to provide a high-level overview of the process.
Is your microphone on?
It should be. You want me to?
I think it sounds a bit like beyond now.
It's on. I'm just trying to. No, it was on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll start with the goal. The goal is to provide a high-level overview of the process for creating and selecting the APS. There we go. The APS calendars for school years twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Our roadmap is we will begin with the APS Board of Education Guard Rail Number Two Regarding Stakeholder Engagement. Will then go into the APS Student Calendar Recommendation Process and Timeline, followed by our Stakeholder Engagement Strategies. And finally, the APS Student Calendar Recommendations for School Years Twenty-five, Twenty-Six, Twenty-Six, Twenty-Seven, and Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Eight. The takeaway is to develop an understanding of the APS Student Calendar Recommendation Process and Timeline. There we go. The APS Board of Education Goal Number Two clearly states, the superintendent will not make a major decision or bring major recommendations to the Board of Education without first. Implementing a stakeholder engagement strategy, including students, parents, teachers, staff, governance teams, and community members. As you will remember, the current set of student calendars were presented at the Board of Education on January first, January twenty-twenty-two. At the Board of Education meeting, the policy, actually. It was brought to you by the Policy and Governance Department under the lead of Ms. Erica Long. Dr. Battle was very intentional when asking the Division of Academics to lead this process to ensure there was a focus on academics when developing and creating these student calendars. Here's a high-level overview of the APS Student Calendar Recommendation Process and Timeline. I'll provide more detail on the upcoming slides. As you can see, we began in November of twenty twenty-three with a stakeholder engagement survey regarding different aspects of the student calendar. We held small group meetings and started to review data. In January and February of this year, we met with a full cross-functional team to review the various status points. Create this draft student calendars and made our first presentation for the Senior Cabinet. In March and April, we created the second survey and made our final recommendation to the Senior Cabinet. It is now made for the first week presentation and hopefully we're on track for the final approval. At the June APS Board of Education meeting and begin our communication in July. The first survey was released on November ninth, twenty twenty-three and closed on December fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. I will present a few data points, the upcoming slides. We had small group meetings with the following stakeholders, so Superintendent Teacher Advisory Council. They shared that like the current set of student calendars, especially the October and February breaks, they also prefer having that same time off as the students. At the expanded cabinet meeting, we discussed the possibilities of alignment with the Metro Atlanta. School Districts in early release days. At that same day, we met with the Board of Education. Teacher Student Advisory. They, one of the things they talked about is they stressed the consideration of the mental health needs of our students and offered mental health days for them. Next, we met with the District Go Team members, which also talked about the possible alignment with the Metro City, Metro Atlanta School Districts. Followed by the Superintendent Teacher Advisory Council, Principal's Advisory Council, which we met in January. They had similar feedback as the teachers regarding most of them liked the current calendars and talked about possible early release dates. We, I will now present a couple of data points at our first APS Student Calendar Survey. We had a total of six thousand six hundred and sixty-seven responses by the time the survey closed. As you can see, the three top stakeholder groups were one, current parents slash caregivers at sixty-four point seven percent of the total responses for three thousand, three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six. Followed by school staff at twenty-two point nine percent of the total responses for one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven. And then student, current students at six point eight percent of the total responses for four hundred and twelve. We received feedback from all of our clusters. School clusters, the top three being the Midtown Cluster at thirty point twenty-three percent of the total responses for one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five. North Atlanta Cluster at twenty-eight point nineteen percent of the total responses for one thousand six hundred and eighteen. Followed by the Jackson Cluster at eleven point thirty-nine percent of the total responses, which constitute six hundred and fifty-four. Overall, fifty-nine percent of respondents were somewhat or extremely satisfied with the current student calendars. A breakdown of that is seventy-one percent of school staff. Fifty-five percent of current parents slash caregivers and fifty-seven percent of students. More parent and community members preferred a longer summer break while staff preferred breaks during the school year. Out of the six, six thousand and sixty-seven responses, we had two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven open-ended responses. Here are some of the common themes. The need for a longer summer, exciting vacations, family visits, and summer camps. Working families were concerned regarding the week-long break in February and October regarding the availability and affordability of childcare. Many families and staff liked the week-long breaks in October and February. There was positive reaction to a later start in August, the ending before Memorial Day. Teachers, as I stated before, wanted the whole week off in October and February. And a relatively small number of respondents commented about the alignment with the other metro city, metro Atlanta school districts for feedback regarding the start and end of the school year. Number of instructional days, professional development, common themes, the average rate of importance, and more open-end feedback can be found on slides twenty-one through twenty-four in the appendix. As you can imagine, I cannot do this work by myself. We create an incredible, hard-working core team and some of those are in the audience today. And they have been, we've been meeting weekly since the beginning of November. I'll start with our Chief Economic Officer and Executive Responsor, Monsieur Landerbrow. From our Strategy Engagement and Engagement Department, we had Ms. Barnett and Dr. Gino. From our Performance Division, we have Ms. Bruber and Dr. Simon. And then Ms. Tucker, from the Division of Academics, we had Dr. Summer Faison, myself, and Ms. Weems. Our full cross-functional team consisted of fifty-five stakeholders comprised of family members of our students, teachers, school-based and central office staff, Go Team members. And representatives from our community. A complete list can be found on slide twenty-six in the appendix. This amazing, hard-working committee met for a total of four working sessions to review data to recreate the draft APS calendars. The first two meetings consisted of reviewing various pieces of data. We started with a review of the previous APS calendars, slide number twenty in the appendix. We also reviewed student enrollment and attendance. We wanted to take a look at if the start of this school year affected when students attended and enrolled. We also looked at early signing, early student sign-out at the end of the school year for middle school students as well as teacher attendance, student discipline, and where in the counties our APS teachers live. As we developed, as we were developing, creating the three draft calendars, we had copies of the other metro Atlanta School District calendars, individual stakeholder feedback. Bringing in a list of major religious observances and holidays. Please refer to slides over twenty-eight through thirty in the appendix for more details regarding these student calendars. As I previously mentioned, we had our first presentation in the Senior Cabinet on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. We provided them with an overview of the timeline and process for developing the student calendar recommendation. As well as presenting them with three draft calendars created by a cross-functional team. Since two of the student calendars were quite similar, it was decided that two draft calendars would be presented in the final APS Student Calendar Survey. Then we created the APS Student Calendar Website, which is referred to on our final APS Student Calendar Survey flyer. And then we launched our survey starting on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and then ended it on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Excuse me. Here's a breakdown of student calendar option A and option B. Option A is most similar to our current set of student calendars, where we allow breaks in October and February. Option B allowed for a later start in August and shorter breaks in October and February. Both included one hundred and eighty instructional days as well as one hundred and ninety-one teacher contractual days. The major, one important note is option A has early release days built into the calendar. We had a total of ten thousand four hundred and fourteen responses by the close of the survey. I was very happy about that. Again, our stakeholder groups were current parents and caregivers at fifty-three point four percent. Followed by school staff at thirty point seven percent and current students at nine point three percent. When looking at the cluster responses, we heard from all of our clusters, the top three being North Atlanta at twenty-five point five percent. Midtown at twenty-four point five percent and Jackson at thirteen point eight percent. Now, let's take a look at the overall responses. As you can see, student calendar option A received a total of sixty-eight point twenty-four percent of the total responses. Which included seven thousand one hundred and seven. And the student calendar option B received a total of thirty-one point seventy-six percent of the total responses for a total of three thousand three hundred and seven. All responses were anonymous to reduce any barriers for participation. Now let's take a look at a further breakdown of the total responses. As I just stated, the greatest number of responses came from our current parents and stakeholders and school staff. Eighty-nine point eight percent of school staff and students overwhelmingly selected option A over option B. Fifty-two point two percent of current parents and caregivers selected option A. Within each cluster, over half of the respondents selected option A, with the exception of the North Atlanta Cluster. Their response rate was forty-three point eight percent of those who chose option A. Please refer to slide number thirty-one in the, in the appendix for a further breakdown of the caregivers and school staff. Out of the ten thousand four hundred and fourteen responses, we had a total of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five open-end responses. Most of them, most of the feedbacks were very similar to our first survey. Many of the respondents preferred a later start date, but then also wanted breaks during the school year. Reasons for the school year breaks include benefits for mental health and wellness, this opportunity to spend time with family outside of summer. And again, the cost and availability of childcare and camps during school breaks and on early release days was a common concern regarding working parents. And including staff, school staff who are also parents. We had our final engagement with the Senior Cabinet on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, where we reviewed all the data we had gathered throughout this process. We looked at the small group feedback we had from the beginning, the results from survey number one and summary number two. When we looked at all this data in its totality, option A was recommended. Option A be presented to you today for first read. In closing, here is a, here's a breakdown of the student calendar option A. As I previously stated, most similar to our current set of student calendars. One hundred and eighty instructional days, one hundred and ninety-one contractual days for teachers. First day at the start of August and before Memorial Day, except for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. There's PL days built into the October and February rates and we have one to two early release dates. That ends my formal presentation. Now I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'll start off with this. Thank you for this incredibly thorough and thoughtful presentation. I think it's important for our community to understand how we come to these decisions. Calendars are one of the most controversial ones we make.
Yes, girl.
And, and we get, as board members, we get feedback about calendars. It's certainly one of the greatest hits on our email list. And I, I also do want to just point out here. That I think these results are actually very similar to the kinds of survey results that we've gotten. Over years and years using this process, that, that not much changes here. So I don't have a question, I'm sorry. I just wanted to just say thank you and appreciate. That, that this is way more information than we typically give about how we make this decision and I hope it will help the community to understand.
You're most welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much for this presentation and for explaining to our community, you know, all of the input. That is involved in coming to this decision. That is not something that's just, you know, arbitrarily made. I, I think what I want to say. Um, I, I think what, what I want to say is, um, I think something. That I would encourage us as board members to, you know, be in community with other boards throughout the metro. Uh, because I would love to see a day where across the metro districts are starting to be more in alignment, uh, with each other. Uh, as a parent and current teacher, I often, you know, there'll be weeks where my son is out of school. But my school is in school and vice versa, and, and it would be nice to see more alignment in that way. Um, and I do, uh, receive the frustration of many, uh, in regards to childcare for weeks during, you know, specific months during the school year. Um, but I also wanted to be known that teacher burnout and student learning burnout are both very real factors. And so having that time during the school year to get a little recharge does go a long way. Uh, in terms of the effectiveness of instruction and the effectiveness of receiving lessons. So, I, I, I really want to put that out there. And also I do appreciate, uh, us coming in at the top of August and having families free. You know, before Memorial Day. I think that, that really does matter. Uh, many communities, that's when the pools get open, that's, you know, that's officially when it feels like summer. Um, and so it's great to see alignment there. Um, and again, you know, to my board members who have relationships at other districts. I would love for us to start having conversations with other boards about getting on one page, um, across the metro. So that families who have educators and students, um, and vice versa, are able, uh, to, to share that time all together. So, thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation and your engagement. My curiosity, um, and question is around the, the participation. So we got a whole lot of participation, and we certainly got participation across all the clusters. But it certainly wasn't equitable participation. So, my question is, why do you think that is? That the, the results are definitely skewed to certain areas? Um, and moving forward, what is the plan to ensure that all voices, um. Are aware of and participate in this conversation?
Thank you for that feedback. And again, what we worked closely with our program directors and closely with our associate superintendents. Make sure everybody had that information. I would provide weekly updates to the program directors. And also, we went out to various community meetings. When Dr. Battle hit our hundreds day, hit a hundred day, um, presentations, celebrations, we went towards those to try to get those. And I tried, we tried everything we could to try to get as much participation equal with the different, with the different clusters. Um, some clusters really don't, you know, what, what I've been told, and some clusters, you know, show up to school versus other clusters. So, it's just, I don't, there's not a magic bullet that I have that I can think of, as long as there anything that you can think of this evening.
Thank you, Board Member Vaughn. Um, I just want to say that we also worked with our communications department. They were a big part of getting the word out, in addition to the program directors and the associate superintendents. What I will say is honestly, we find that some, lots of, some stakeholders, um, tend to just trust what. Um, say as a school district sometimes around what we're selecting for a calendar. And so they then just, um, support in a way where they say, this is when we're gonna start school, this is when we're gonna end. So to be very honest, there are stakeholders out there who's saying, you are the school district, we'll just trust what you say at that moment. And then we'll give feedback if there is some concern. But we have, um, turned over every rock to try to make sure that we could reach everyone. Again, as Tom said, we went to community meetings that Dr. Battle held. We worked with communications, we worked with people who are on the ground every day, which are the associate superintendents, working with principals. And so that is a constant work in progress, not just around the calendar, but it's a work in progress around engaging our stakeholders. So that they know that we want to hear their voice, and it's not just about the calendar. So I will say that that's what we found in this process. And moving forward, we will continue to refine those strategies to make sure that we can reach them. And if we have something that's untapped, we're going to figure it out, and we're gonna make sure that that happens.
Thank you for that answer. And, um, I also encourage us if we don't, um. To think about other ways of, of getting that information. So, is a, a focus group something that, that could add context to this as well? I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied with where we landed, but this is just, um, like you said, it's something that we experience in other places. Around engagement, not just around this topic. And just really encouraging us to, to get a little innovative with, um, with how we're getting feedback. If we continue to see these types of results, because I know folks have an opinion. It's like, just how, how do we get that genuine opinion?
Board Member Vaughn, if I could just add a little context to the numbers as well. Um, it's also in comparison to the number of students in the cluster. So, North Atlanta cluster has about seven thousand eight hundred students, Midtown six thousand students, and then it goes down with forty-eight hundred in Jackson. So, is similar percentages of families participating in students in the cluster, not every cluster is equal in the number of families to participate. But every other point is, well.
Thank you for that context.
It's a great point. So, last question, and this is for the good of the whole, why, because my voters are particularly passionate. About the calendar, and was excited that this is coming out, so I just read it, it's very comprehensive. But I do think some edification on how twenty-five, twenty-six is after Memorial Day.
Correct.
Which is not particularly well-received in my neighborhoods. But we start on the first, and then the next year, we're starting a little bit later and we're getting out earlier. So just clarification on, and without, without, or other advocates' counterfeits.
Right.
They gave it from a, from a certain rhetoric.
Yep. So what it is, is where Memorial Day falls. So if Memorial Day falls on a Monday or Tuesday, that's more difficult. Usually if it falls later in the week. Then it's, it's early, then we can have the one hundred and eighty instructional days. Because Memorial Day is a little bit earlier, because usually it's, it's the last weekend in May. Those, it's not the last weekend, it's the third weekend, I believe, the second to last weekend. So when Memorial Day falls.
Isn't Memorial Day always on a Monday?
Yeah, it's on a mu- the week, yes, the weeks, make it very clear, the week.
Something change?
No, 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 no.
Is there a Memorial Day on Tuesdays now?
No, 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 no.
Tell me when.
Sorry, it's the week, the, the week of when it falls. So, sometimes we usually have, you know, on those calendars that are especially, um. Okay, where was this? Um, especially when those calendars come, when those Memorial Days fall on that week, that last week. So that's, that's the reason why we have to go after, to get the instructional days.
Just, just to clarify, for school year twenty-four, twenty-five, we come back for the second semester on Tuesday, January seventh. New Year's Day is a Wednesday. We'll, we'll build in a couple of days for teacher professional learning. Come back to school, students come back on that Tuesday, seven. That's a little bit later, but it wouldn't make sense to bring them back to school after the semester break toward the end of the week. That then pushes us to the last day of school being after Memorial Day. Memorial Day of next year is Monday, May twenty-sixth, and we have three days of school after that. That's simply because of that January start and even to be reasonable and practical when the students back.
Do you have that clarification? Can you shout out where it was? There's three days, are, yeah.
Ms., Ms. Uh, Vice Chair, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Vaughn, would you mind, uh, clarifying that again? When we come back after that, that January?
So this is about next school year, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right.
A calendar that's already decided. Um, we come back, start the second semester. Teachers have a professional learning day on Monday, the sixth. Students begin their second semester on Tuesday, the seventh. January first, New Year's Day is a Wednesday. January second, it wouldn't really make sense to come back to class or to bring teachers back on a Thursday. Coming back from the semester break. That semester ends, it wraps up. Memorial Day is Monday, the twenty-sixth. The last day of school is that Thursday, the twenty-ninth. It is not ideal. But this is not a calendar that you're deciding on today. This is next year's calendar, already decided.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Okay, the last question, real quick. So the city has started partnering with us even more with camps during the breaks. Um, just want to encourage us to work even more with them, even have data around that. So we make sure we have body affordable childcare options for our families, knowing that these breaks are really important for our staff and our students. So thank you all.
Really know it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
And look at that, just the magic buzzer.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and, um, Ms. Simon. Ms. Copeland, we're ready for your presentation.
Can you hear me now? Alright, happy Wednes- no, today's not Wednesday, oh my god, happy Monday.
It's Wednesday.
I wanted to make sure y'all paying attention, I know. Gotta let me, alright. So, um, good afternoon, Dr. Battle, Board Chair Mitchell, Vice Chair McDonald, and members of the board. My name is Keisha Copeland, I'm interim executive director of family and community engagement. And today I am going to give you some updates from family engagement. Alright, so the agenda again is an overview of the Office of Family Engagement. We're gonna talk to you about five strategies for our year, um, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then give you a look of family engagement in action. And any questions that you may have. So, here is our North Star. I will preface it by saying, for our weekly team meetings. We literally recite our mission, vision, and values because we want to make sure that we walk the talk. Um, but I want to highlight specifically, uh, the definition of family engagement that we adopted from child welfare dot gov. Um, and honing in on that it, the relationships, it's building genuine relationships with families. To support their overall well-being, to include students' learning and healthy development, both at home and at school. We also believe that when families are engaged and partnerships are created with a common focus, it leads to helping children grow and thrive. We also know that family engagement is definitely linked to academic achievement. Here's our strategy and framework. Uh, to the left, a circle, you see our stakeholder groups. Again, you see our mission, um, in the middle are our strategies, which I will talk to momentarily. And then at the bottom are our four Cs, which is our communication loop, collaboration, capacity building, and continuous learning. Um, in the top right, this is our desire outcome of engagement excellence. So we believe that family engagement is tailored for all schools across the district, resulting in equity of educational excellence. So we can't do this work alone. We do believe that collaboration is key. Um, so you see family engagement is in the center, but I do want to highlight a few groups that we closely work with. Which is our federal programs department, um, as well as our teaching and learning, our multilingual programs. I always make sure anything that is coming out of the Office of Family Engagement, that it has been translated into Spanish. So those are the two that I definitely wanted to highlight. Little context about our team. So about two years ago, we were a team of three for the entire district. Just take a breath on it. For the entire district. We went from a team of three to a team of two. Last year, we expanded to a team of seven, seven dynamic individuals who do a great job across this district. I do have two vacancies. I have one to leave, uh, on good terms. Um, he's doing well, so we will have to fill that position. And then we're also adding an administrative assistant, um, to the team. So our strategies for this school year, again, are data-informed practices, strategic support to schools, capacity building. Access to resources, outreach, and engagement. And we're gonna talk about each of these. So for our data-informed practices, we do have three data sources that we've been using over the past for five years. The first one is our family engagement leadership team data. Um, this is a school-based leadership team. This team consists of an administrator, wraparound support, instructional staff, parent liaison. Please, please note, we do not have parent liaisons in all of our schools, but we have asked schools to identify a staff member that does family engagement work. So we call them our family engagement support staff, who also sits on, on the felt team. We've asked for go-team representatives as well as PTA, and we're also asking for student representation. So again, this is a cross-functional team that I just mentioned in the second bullet. Um, and our office serves as consultants to the schools to help them with their engagement strategies and family engagement. This information here is data from our felt teams, as I just mentioned. So, the family engagement liaisons from our office, we have two meetings with our teams, with our schools. We have a pre-meeting that occurs in the fall, and then we have a post-meeting that occurs in the spring. And so this is qualitative data that we have taken from the family engagement leadership teams. Related to successes of family engagement, opportunities of family engagement, how are you using your innovative practices? What families are engaged as the least engaged compared to most engaged, and then what supports that community. And so this line here shows those top themes of supports and or things that they're doing great. So you see our family engagement events, some of those strategies is how do we streamline our events? How do we combine them within our cluster? How do we collaborate across clusters? For family skill building, it is either we have a parent university and we want to use more strategies or have more activities within the parent university. How do we title those activities to literacy and numeracy? And also providing tools for families to support students' learning at home, as well as sharing that information. And then our last one is family outreach strategies. So how are we using those strategies for our social media to engage our families? Are we incorporating morning and afternoon events for our families? Is it hybrid? Are we asking families about what are those barriers to family engagement? Is there a feedback loop as you, as you are receiving survey responses from your families? Are we communicating out those outcomes? And then also utilizing again with social media, YouTube channels. So that is our qualitative data that's very high level. But then we also took a needs assessment. So this needs assessment was, um, shared with, well, we had questions, it was a micro scale. Using, um, eight principles, which I'll talk about momentarily. But we asked principals and their parent liaisons, what are your top three needs for your families and schools? So this is a deeper dive of that, where some of the things, these are not the top three per school, but I wanted to point out a few of them. Affordable after-school, parent education career opportunities, mental health supports and family counseling. Financial literacy for families, funding incentives for staff and families. So again, we took the felt data, we also take, took the needs assessment data. And we shared it with our family engagement organizations. One of the organizations that I really want to call out, that we've been working very closely with, is the City of Atlanta Parks and Recreation. They are amazing. So they took our needs assessment, they went through it, because again, this is by school. Um, but also cluster-based, and they're able to share, um, I think you just mentioned it, um, Board Member Howard. Where they have, um, camps during breaks, which we didn't originally have, right? Um, they also have things for our grandparents, and so we're able to push that information out. They have, um, actually done two, two years in a row, more than a trim, barber beauty and mental health. We've also incorporated our student advisory council to also be a part of that, as well as our safety and security department. We talked about gain violence prevention. Again, qualitative data. And then our last source is our family engagement survey dashboard, which is quantitative and qualitative. As you see to the right, as well as to the left of the screen, are our nine focus areas. Seven of these are from our national PTA standards. Two we added, which are supporting family wellness and strategic family engagement. This is the third year that we have made the survey available. This is our second year where there was a full rollout. We rolled it out this year from November to December. Um, the seventy-seven point two percent favorable are the responses that families agree to strongly disagree. Um, we also collaborated with our data information group, as well as our federal programs group. This year, we combined, when we pushed out the survey, we combined our Title I survey. We combined the first of the calendar survey, um, out at the same time, so that families could get, get it at one time. Um, we also built the survey through Qualtrics survey platform this year. The responses have been shared with our associate superintendents, as well as our principals. And our next step is to upload the results to our APS insights for our families. So I talked about the quantitative. This is the qualitative. I love qualitative data. I feel like it is the storytelling. You get the truth. So this is in quotes. These are responses from our families. The first one you see is from our middle school, so a middle school family. The middle one is from elementary, and the last one is from high school. And what you will see is that, based on the question that we asked this year, what can schools do to strengthen its relationship with families? And what is a school doing well? Communication. We're doing well with communication, and we need opportunities in communication. Same feedback as last year. Either we over-communicate, don't communicate enough, it's not concise, I don't wanna see the eight oh two number, text me. We're getting all of that, right? So I wanted to share that with you as well, that we are also trying to figure out how to streamline that process. Now, for our second one, strategic support to schools, I've already mentioned about our family engagement leadership teams. But I also wanna highlight one of our schools, who was also our APS award winner, Excellence in Families for Family Engagement Leadership Teams. I will say, when we rolled out our felt, um, initiative a few years ago, schools were like, what is felt? We already have a team, and we're like, hey, we know you have a team, but we wanna incorporate into, we wanna push it to your team because we wanna make sure that you have those initiatives and support statement. So Burgess Peterson Academy, not only do they have amazing signature events that are standing room-only, they have over five hundred parents with their principals remind, and that's quantity. But from a quality lens, they actually celebrate their students through student achievement and attendance, and it's bringing rights against classrooms. The beauty is that, of this, is that the families actually come in to celebrate the students as well as the teachers, which I think is commendable. Capacity building. We are always building capacity, so we're learning with our stakeholders and we're learning from our stakeholders. I wanna take a moment to talk about this amazing group of individuals that we work with, not just monthly, but daily, which are our parent liaisons. They are phenomenal. Not just the parent liaison, as those are family engagement support staff, assistant principals, school business managers, that are literally doing two roles. And so we provide monthly professional learnings to each of them. It is a hybrid approach because some of them are unable to come out of the school. But we are building the capacity of liaisons to share information and resources, either from our internal departments, as well as our external organizations. In addition to that, we have also had our parent liaisons to actually provide trainings to us, which is awesome. So in addition to that, we appreciate them, um, in April. We recognize their hard work, their accomplishments and dedications, which we just did a few weeks ago. Couple of other things that we talked about before is our male engagement network. So this year, we, um, challenged our men and fathers with Men on the Move Week to bring their students to school and read with them for fifteen minutes a day. We also had Champ Fatherhood to come out to provide a Smart Goals workshop specifically for men and by men. This is our first year, won't be the last, that we had a men's conference. Um, we hosted, it will be annual, and it is a safe space for men to have transparent and vulnerable conversations to promote, to promote our brotherhood and accountability. So in addition to our parent liaisons, our men, we also provide family engagement training to all of our employees. Um, we work with our HR department during new employee orientation, and we provide practices for new teachers. We, again, I've already spoken about our parent liaisons professional learning, but at the beginning of the school year, before we kick off in August, we provide professional learning for all employees on family engagement one-on-one. We partnered with our math department this year for family professional learning about the new math standards for secondary and elementary schools. We're also working with United Way, and we have been working with United Way Fostering Family Leaders for a couple of years now, where there it is a curriculum-based program for our families. And those topics range from goal-setting, understanding your child's milestones, shared power, communication, to practicing advocacy. Also, lastly on this slide, we've been hosting our family engagement conference. And each year, we're building the capacity and learning from each other. We have provided not just sessions for our families, but we also have vendors or organizations that are able to come out and to provide those resources in real time for our families. Access to resources. Okay, I'm really excited about this. Um, we, so we've been doing the summer camp expo for about ten years. We changed it to the summer experience because, based on the feedback that we've been hearing from families, we've had a lot of summer camp, summer camp and enrichment camps, but we didn't have internships. So it's more of a target for our K through, um, eighth, perhaps nine, ten, but not five juniors and seniors. So I'm gonna read this slide because this is very important. I attended, um, breakfast with the board at the Carver Cluster. And anywhere I go, I'm always promoting either what our office has, what the district has, or organizations. And so I mentioned the summer experience expo, which was the next day. I shared with them that we have interns. I told them they have siblings, that they need to come out. And I am proud to announce, Mr. Austin Chambers, Carver Early College Senior, will be interning at McKenna's. It is a paid internship. He literally caught, yes, we have to clap for that. He was at breakfast with the board. He said, I have some things to do, but I'm gonna try to make it. He came at the last hour at ASC. He connected with McKenna's. They called and was like, the vice president is impressed with him. He's an amazing young man. He will be going to college in the fall, but he will have a paid summer internship this summer, which is awesome. So yeah, I had to put that plug in. Way to go, Austin. So I've already mentioned our family engagement organizations, our male engagement network. But I do wanna preface in the top right-hand corner, APS Cares. So if you're not familiar with it, it's customized from findhelp.org. We literally started with a manual process of calling organizations, um, within the community to find out what resources and supports they have. Literally calling them, taking down their addresses, their phone numbers, emails, you name it. So we worked with our Office of Student Programs and Support Services with Find Help. We've been using Find Help, but not deliberately. And so with that being said, APS, we went from a manual process to an electronic process. With APS Cares, you literally can put in your zip code, and it will give you all of the resources within that zip code. This is nationwide, so it doesn't necessarily have to be in your zip code. It could be in another state. We've had testimonials from our parent liaisons. As you know, a lot of times, our families have emergencies on the weekends, at night, on a Sunday, where it's really hard to connect. Um, we, through APS Cares, we've had a family member that has been housed, that was homeless. We have had families that are able to find employment. And so we, in our monthly meetings, we're asking our parent liaisons, what do you hear from our families? Are we continuously using the resources of abundance that Atlanta Public Schools has? So I definitely wanted to point that out. Our last one is outreach and engagement. Um, we're everywhere. We are everywhere, virtually, in person. We're still, um, collaborating with our schools with food pantry distribution. When there's an abundance of food, we're reaching out to other clusters or other schools that may need it as well, and we're telling them to come over. Um, any school family engagement activities, my teams are, my team is always out in the schools, supporting the schools. One Carver, this is the second, I think, second year, third year, oh my gosh. Third year, um, we've been supporting One Carver as well. Um, continuing this support through our Chattahoochee Trailer Park. And we've been working closely with our schools with Title I meetings as it relates to family engagement. And as you all may have heard, um, I think it was last month, the May's Cluster Job Fair. We also attend our board member community meetings. We provide updates. We zone in conversations, collaborated with gears, open house, you name it, we're there. So not only are we there, we're also sharing the information. We're sharing it through our comm communications department. We're pushing it out through our parent liaisons, our counselors, our social workers, our NPUs, our parent organizations, uh, because we wanna make sure that we're getting the information out to all of our families. We're still having an intentional focus on our Latinx fa- Latinx families. Whether, well, so we work with our communications department. They provide us, um, information on all our APS that we send out. Um, and we also attend or share information Wednesday nights with our, um, Spanish-speaking families through multi- po- multilingual programs. Alumni engagement. I do wanna say I'm a proud product of Atlanta Public Schools. A proud product of Atlanta Public Schools. It is a blessing to be able to come back. I have been here over twenty years, and I'm not even talking about when I was a student, to, to pay it forward to not just my colleagues, but not, and not just families, but to students. So this is dear to my heart. This is purpose work for me. It is hard work, but it is also hard work. Um, and I am a graduate from the Benjamin Elijah May's High School. I gotta make that plug. Um, and so with that being said, alumni engagement is like so awesome for us. We have over five hundred employees that are alumni of Atlanta Public Schools in all capacities. So we celebrated this, um, September and this October, I believe. I think we took it over into two months. Worked with the board staff, Mr. Gaither, Mr. Glass, partnerships, Ms. Joy Hunter, and our strategy and engagement team. And we literally, if you saw someone with a tambourine, it was me. We literally went to all of our schools, all of our departments, facilities, transportation, CLF, to celebrate and honor employees that are APS alumni who are coming back to give and to pay it forward. I mean, we've had people that are thirty, forty years, even some that just graduated from Best Academy that are coming back. And so I wanted to put that plug in. In addition to that, we celebrated a hundred and fifty years last year. We're now at one fifty-one. But we just, our first annual IMAPS Sneakers and Scholarship fundraiser, where we were able to provide sixteen scholarships in the amount of ten thousand dollars to amazing high school seniors. I wanna thank the partnerships, Joy Hunter, for fundraising these dollars. Um, we had an amazing cross-functional team across the district, so I thank them myself very much. It was a fun event. It was a lot of hard work, and we plan on doing it again and continue to do it again. Alright, so we have a new initiative, which is our Family Engagement Action Team. In the past, it was our Family Engagement Collaborative, um, but we have changed it where this specifically is to focus on strategies and resources toward our shared goal, that's your, shared goal of enhanced family partnerships for APS. It's a cross-functional team, um, and the focus is on an internal engagement calendar. Atlanta Public Schools, we do a lot of great things, but they're all happening at the same time. So how do we streamline those efforts? And some of the working action is, we're networking across departments to inform and strengthen engagement efforts. We're generating those proposal ideas for a district engagement plan. We're also gonna analyze the list by departments and then develop a proposal to streamline efforts. So last thing? Sorry, two more things. I'm gonna be quick. Alright. Family and Student Support Center, this is from our Office of Student, um, Programs and Support Services. So as you know, this is opening in the fall. It will serve as a centralized location for all student services, in which students and families can easily access resources, programs, and services. And it'll also be a learning space for stakeholders to facilitate indoor team workshops. So our next steps is to continue to do what we're doing. Um, continue to collaborate across the district. Continue to share all of our amazing resources, as well as receive those resources. There's all the time I have, 'cause y'all told me two minutes. So questions? Okay, I'm open for questions.
Alright, so I'm gonna open up for questions from our colleagues. And I do wanna say why you've always been here, and that I can be saying thank you very much. And like you call yourself, I'm like, yes, I do one time, and I'm not so willing to, but I'll be just allowed. And yet you can do it. Alright, let's start then. Alright, Katie, you go. Thank you so much. I know you and your team work so hard, and we see you everywhere. And, um, just wanna lift up across the work that we know David did, Brooklyn Town and North Atlanta Cluster, and the importance of connecting with our Latinx families. I know you have people on the ground and just, you know, continuing that critical work. Um, 'cause we wanna make sure across the board that we're reflecting our communities. Um, and it's great to know about the APS Cares information, that people can get that right there. I hear a lot of feedback around resources per cluster that's really accessible proximity-wise to folks. Um, and knowing that that will be also available in that point format with the resource center. Just the data that you continue to collect and that we, um, as a district are collecting to really make sure that we're maximizing our resources, getting that to folks. And glad you lifted up a Carver student who got internship, and knowing that support center can make it more easy, more easy for students to access some of those opportunities. Um, and my bad, I thought you were talking about the upcoming one Carver. You're right, the last one was the second. I'm already this year, this November, gonna read the third. So thank you so much. I just, those are the things that, um, came to me when I went to the presentation. Appreciate all your girls' hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. I lo- I love the motto of supporting, you know, centrally supporting the, the work in the field. Is there a way to align, you know, one of the, one of the key, key challenges our schools are facing around is attendance? See, thirty percent of our kids are, are, are chronically absent. How do we, how do we support a lot of that, especially when we talk about elementary school kids? That's, that's as much the families as it is the kid. How do, how do we support our, our, you don't have to answer it now, but I just, I just feel like you have a unique set of relationships with families, and you're in front of families, and you're sharing messages, and you've shared supports and structures and tools. And understand, there seems to be after the pandemic, a lack of, of energy around this nationwide. This is not Atlanta Public Schools. Unfortunately, it's not uniquely struggling here. But whatever you can do to help get the message out, uh, around attendance, I think is gonna be a critical investment, I guess.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm just asking just, um, a little clarity. How are we pushing, I know you talked about in terms of internship opportunities in our partnership with the City of Atlanta. How we're, how, how are we pushing some of the other opportunities that the City of Atlanta are, are offering to our, you know, to our students and our, uh, families? And the reason why I ask that, I know I get a lot of calls in terms of opportunities. Um, what is the schools offering at like, you know, the summer and, and after hours? I'm constantly referring them, um, to the cities, the city pages. Just kinda wanna understand how we're doing a deep dive of, uh, deep dive there.
So you probably answered it. Um, we definitely push it up to communications, and they also share the City of Atlanta website, um, information. But again, our main source, sources are through our parent liaisons, our counselors and social workers, um, as well as our NPUs and parent organizations. So as we're receiving the information, even if you guys are sending the information to us, I know you're specifically talking about the city, but if there are other organizations, that's, that's the main way for us to know that it's getting directly to the families because then they're using their, their communication channels, which could be Remind. It could be Infinite Campus, robocalls to reach those families. Um, our schools do a great job of, and we literally have pictures of them in the carpool line, sharing information on the buses, um, out in the community. And so those are the other ways that we're trying to get the information out.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much, Ms. Copeland, for, for all of the work that you do. I wanted to, um, particularly highlight, uh, your work with the IMAPS Sneakers and Scholarship Event. Um, I had an opportunity to be there with, among many of my colleagues, and that was just a really fun night. Like, it just felt like the culture. It felt very Atlanta, and I just appreciated, um, us getting the opportunity to highlight our amazing in that way and do it in a way where they can show about them equally as well. Um, and it was great to see all the board members in sneakers. So I, I appreciated that as, as the, one of the sneaker heads, one of the sneaker heads on, on the dates. Um, you should be trying to comfort me sometimes. But I, I also wanted to, um, yeah, speak particularly to the fellow APS fathers out there. I had an opportunity to go to, uh, the men's conference that we had at Thero. Um, it felt like only a few weeks ago, maybe it was a month or so ago. It was in March. Okay, thank you. Um, and, and it was, I really appreciated being there, but I really wa- wanted to see more fathers be present, uh, and show up. And I also had an opportunity, just, I feel like maybe that was a week or two ago, to go to the East Forest Championship at North Atlanta High School, which, I mean, it was so well-attended, and it was so fantastic. which, I mean, it was so well attended and it was so fantastic. But one of the things that stood out to me, um, and shout out to our tech, uh, our folks in tech here at, at Central Office for creating that event. But the, there were so many fathers who were engaged in there. I mean, you would've thought it was like football, wrestling, like, you know, contact sport kinda, kinda vibe. But there, there were so many dads who were so into that event, and I wanted to encourage us uh to, to advantage those type of offerings to engage our fathers, to, to pull them in. Because there seemed to be a big draw uh for dads to be there. Um, and inadvertently on that side, I wanna encourage our girls, who I know are gamers, to show up for the East Sports, because I did see a higher concentration of boys there when I know there's a lot of girls that game. So I, I just kinda wanna put those two things out there and say thank you so much for the work that you do out here for the district. Yes.
Thank you. Cynthia.
Uh, yes, and again, another great presentation uh tied to the, the larger goals of the district. And with a lot of good information, both for us and for the community. I'm gonna ask the same question that I usually ask when we do this, which is how we are reaching out to those who are not as technologically literate or comfortable as we continue to move to online uh websites, devices, uh, online surveys. Uh, I, I think we, we run the risk of losing contact with particularly our elders, our, our grandparents and great-grandparents who are raising children. And, and we all know that there are many schools where that's a significant portion of the community. Uh, and a lot of them are not technologically comfortable or literate. And so what are, I think you answered some of this kind of in, in the course of, of answering Ishay's question. But, but how are we really thinking hard about not excluding those who aren't as comfortable with the phone or the laptop or the device that as most of us have become?
Yeah, so thank you for that. Our schools do a great job of, so, so let me preface it by saying, even in our Family Engagement Leadership Team meetings, we ask our schools, um, who are your stakeholders or who do you have more of stakeholder group? And so some of our schools have more grandfamilies as opposed to others they may have ten Z. I will say, and I'm not calling out Maze because I'm a alum, but I will say, no, seriously.
You can do that.
They had over two hundred grandparents to attend a family engagement session where they were able to sit with their grandchild or grandstudent at seven in the morning. Because this is the thing that I tell, from a strategy, you have to understand what is the best time. We know that grandpa, my dad will be eighty next year, and he is up at six in the morning. By the time we get to work, they've done all of their work. And so we have to preface it based on our stakeholder groups. And so from seven to nine, they were able to, and they didn't even use their phones, right? They were able to go over those test scores. A lot of times we've had our grandfamilies where their grandchild is literally with them. So if it's a Zoom call, they're helping them with the Zoom. They're helping them how to unmute themselves and answer those questions. Um, and so I will say that our schools are doing a great job of that. I think there's more that can be done um across the district. And the other thing that we do is we take strategies and successes from other schools, and we tell them to talk to each other. So we are a liaison to a certain degree, but I'm saying, hey, reach out to this school because they have some great strategies that they've done. Even Harper-Autry Elementary School um had an attendance challenge. I think this was right after COVID. And they couldn't understand, and again, that's an elementary school, why aren't the babies coming to school? They reached out to their parents. Their cell phones died, so they don't have alarm clocks. So the school was able to provide alarm clocks to, I mean, it's just that simple. So everything is not always innovative. Sometimes we have to go back to the old way of doing things um that works. And so it, it was an increase up there in attendance for that.
And, and that's a really good example. There are still some old school methods that work. Um, and, and Maze is a good example of that, because I know we have a couple of elementary schools in Maze that really do have a large proportion of kids who are being raised by, by their elders. Uh, so, so thank you for that. And uh I think we also need to keep in mind the digital divide. That, that we have neighborhoods where Wi-Fi is not as broadly available as it did. We learned that during COVID when we, when we had to put the hotspots on the tops of buses and that drive about so kids could, could participate in, in school. Um, but just being sure that we remember that there are other ways to communicate other than digital.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Thank you for your presentation. That was fantastic. And we'll transition to our next presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Dr. Blacken, we're ready for your monthly financial update presentation.
Alright, good afternoon. I cannot promise to meet the energy level. Uh. But I'll present uh four topics related to finance for you today. I'm not sure if this is on. Really okay? Okay, great. Um, so, good afternoon, Board Chair Mitchell, members of the board, and Dr. Battle. Today I'll present four topics related to finance. First, I'll provide you with the financials for F Y twenty twenty-four for all activities occurring in the months of July through March within the Consolidated General Fund. I'll then provide you the quarterly update of our student activity funds, and I'll discuss the need for some budget adjustments in the current fiscal year. Finally, I'll present an overview of the F Y twenty-five budget, which will be before you this evening for tentative adoption. Within the next six slides, we'll cover the F Y twenty-four financials for the first nine months of the fiscal year. The financial position continues to be relatively strong, and so far, we have collected about eighty-five point four seven percent of the total resources budgeted, with local collections at ninety-eight point seven nine percent, state at sixty-two point fifteen percent, and other, which includes the Fund One Fifty Title One Transfer Inn at seventy-seven point three three percent. We're currently on track and tucking ahead of pace for revenue collections overall as compared to this point. Last year by April, we had collected a total of eighty-seven point two eight percent of total revenue. This year, we're at ninety point nine seven percent. We've currently earmarked a usage of fund balance of seventy-one point ninety-eight million. However, based on collections, we forecast that the actual usage of fund balance may be closer to thirty-five million. On slide five, we see the budget to actual expenditures so far for F Y twenty-four. We have currently spent seventy point two six percent of the budget allotments, and spending in all functions is appropriate for this point in the fiscal year. Slide six represents the current spending trend for F Y twenty-four against F Y twenty-three. By the end of March last year, we had spent sixty-eight point nine two percent of our total annual spend. Currently, we have spent slightly ahead of that at seventy point two six percent. We're managing the spend down in the final month to ensure that we end the fiscal year within the allotted budgets. Detailed financials can be found in Agenda Item nine point two. Title and Esser Funds are currently spending at an appropriate pace for this point in the fiscal year. As a reminder, title funds have a fifteen-month period of availability, June first through September thirtieth. Federal Programs is funding several summer programs with Title One Part A and Title Four Part A money. And uh this will also reflect an uptick in spending. When comparing the year-to-date actibles, F Y twenty-four percentage spend is higher than F Y twenty-three for Title Two A and Title Four B and Esser Three. The district, the district is still spending at a faster pace in F Y twenty-four than F Y twenty-three for Esser, as we're on track to expend all of those funds. Pending charter partner reimbursements totaling three point five million will increase the spend down, and Federal Programs has been working with schools and departments to expend their current title funds in a timely manner. Next is our student activity quarterly shareouts. Schools have collected slightly more revenue than expensed at three point nine three percent, or three point nine three million and three point four nine million respectively. School-by-school detailed reports of student activity funds can be found in Agenda Item nine point five. I'm bringing three budget adjustments today for the Consolidated General Fund. The first is the amount of one point four million for utilities, specifically electricity, due to usage rates and past due invoices and related fees. The second is for the Board Office, an amount of seven hundred and forty thousand to cover additional expenses related to the superintendent transition, superintendent search, and board elections. Both of these adjustments will be funded through the recognition of additional local revenue. My final general fund adjustment is in the amount of two thousand ten dollars. This is a correction to the March adjustments we brought to you that did not accurately reflect the amount that was consolidated to schools for Title One Family Engagement. This two thousand should be, the proposed new budget of seventy-three point six million reflects the actual amount of funds for the current fiscal year. Details of this adjustment can be found in Agenda Item six point zero one. And Agenda Item nine point four includes the detailed information reports for special revenue adjustments, less than one million dollars that have occurred. The second half of my presentation will walk through the proposed F Y twenty-five budget, which will be before you tonight for tentative adoption. And I'll start first by thanking the team that has worked on this, my budget team, and also all of the teams behind me um that have worked so hard in getting this budget balanced over the last. Also, the drafts with department sheets and school program sheets can be found in Agenda Item six point two. And I'll recognize that these are draft materials and may contain some errors as we currently are in the process of transitioning from our previous budget development system to Open Go. And we commit to having accurate and final sheets for final adoption. This was a difficult budget, but we're proud of the target, targeted, strategic, and goal-aligned investments that we were able to make. This budget prioritizes student learning, including an eleven point eight million dollar investment to continue our Readers or Leaders Initiative, bringing district and school-based literacy supports and professional learning to every elementary school. This funding will support hiring readers or leaders coordinators and specialists, hiring school-based readers or leaders coaches, securing the Cox Campus modules for professional learning, paying stipends to teachers for completing the reading implementation modules, and securing resources to support the science of reading implementation. This budget also includes seven point eight million to ensure one additional position in every school to support the whole child and nine million dollars in new investments for special education. This budget also invests in our people and includes fifty-eight point nine million in new investments for teacher salary increases, retention stipends, and non-teacher cost of living adjustments. This on average is an eleven percent increase for teachers and in an average three point five percent for non-teachers. We also continue to invest in development, including an additional one point five million for leadership, teacher, and career development programs. Lastly, this budget commits to strengthening our systems with a fifteen point four million dollar new investment to bring our nutrition program in-house with a goal of increasing student meal participation. Seven hundred and twenty thousand will be for safety and security and one point four million to continue funding long-term school-based substitute teachers. While we're excited about these increases, offsets, cuts, and trade-offs were required. The development of this budget has required us to make tough decisions around personnel and non-personnel costs, especially in our central office. We will work to minimize gaps in service resulting from these decisions, but are confident that we're on the right track. We anticipate an increase in local revenue of approximately nine percent from the current F Y twenty-four budget, which takes into account the current level of collections, plus an increase in the DeFulton and the CAB tax digest. We're also recognizing the increase in title adver- of adverbalum taxes and the negotiated payments within the TAD and our government agreement. We anticipate an increase in state revenue of approximately seven percent. This includes an increase based on the state salary schedule and state health funding that is offset by increases in the local fair share. An increase in transportation funding is being passed on to the Transportation Department. Finally, we're requesting access to sixty-nine million of fund balance to cover one-time expenses, pilot programs, and key budget parameters related uh requested during the budget development process. Traditional school budgets are going up overall, about three percent, which includes some of the salary increases, benefit increases, the counselor equivalent position in every school, and readers or leaders funding, partially offset by enrollment declines and a fifty percent cut to school reserves. Charter and partner budgets are up about eight percent and thirteen percent respectively, based primarily on revenue for next year. The department budget reflects a decline of three percent, including a fifty percent cut to all travel budgets, three percent non-personal, non-personnel cuts in many departments, position reductions, additional non-personnel cuts, all offset by increases to benefits. The district-wide currently holds the increases to state health and compensation. Slide fifteen shows a breakout of school budgets by cluster. All clusters show an overall year-over-year increase in allocations, even as enrollment continues to decline in some clusters. Decreases in non-traditional schools include a correction to average salary assumptions in the current year and the tru- and the transition of Ava Direct post Esser. As requested at the Budget Commission meeting, we're also providing a corresponding slide to show enrollment trend over time. While the total district enrollment has not varied drastically over the last ten years, it's about, it's down about four hundred and seventy students. Where and how those students are served has changed. We are serving about seventy-seven hundred fewer students in our traditional schools than we were ten years ago. This data continues to inform our multi-year decision-making processes. One impact to serving fewer students in our traditional schools is a harder look at our centrally provided services. This budget includes cuts to central office, including ninety-four point seventy-five position abolishments, fifty-six of which are vacant, twenty-three creations with a net impact of seventy-one point seventy-five positions, and other non-personnel reductions, including the consolidation or elimination of some departments. These cuts are partially offset by increases to the employer share of benefit rates, Esser roll-in, readers or leaders, transportation costs, safety and security, and special education. Slides eighteen and nineteen show the proposed budget against the budget parameters. These have been discussed in detail on other slides or at previous Budget Commission meetings. This chart reviews the proposed budget for F Y twenty-five against the twenty-four amended budget by function. The budget by function slides shows a significant increase in dollar amounts to direct instruction with the additional funds for school whole-child supports and readers or leaders funds reflected in people services and staff services. The funds to support the nutrition program are reflected in the transfer category. Here you can see the majority of all new spending is going to salary and benefits. Other large increases are in other purchase services where charter and partner budgets are reported and in operating transfers to support bringing nutrition in-house. While the current F Y twenty-four budget includes an assumed usage of fund balance of seventy million, as previously mentioned, we're currently forecasting a usage of closer to thirty-five million, leaving a fund balance to expenditure ratio of twenty-one point nine four percent. With that being the case, we feel confident about going into next year with a stronger fund balance than initially presumed. A usage of fund balance of sixty-nine point two nine million for the F Y twenty-five budget will still maintain an overall percentage of fund balance to expenditures of fifteen percent, in alignment with the board's policies and parameters. We're still working hard to try to fit the E R P system into this budget, and the column to the right-hand side demonstrates what an additional usage of fund balance could look like to get that funded. Of course, the budget too is much more than the general fund. Details of the special revenue, splosts, nutrition, and student activity funds were presented in April, on April eighteenth at the Budget Commission meeting in detail. The total budget for all funds brought to you for tentative adoption equals about one point seven nine billion. The first of two public hearings on the budget is scheduled for tonight at six P M. We will host two informational meetings on the budget on May seventh and on May fourteenth. And our final Budget Commission meeting is scheduled for May sixteenth. Final adoption is planned for June third. The appendix is full of additional information, including the budget timeline and various materials that have been shared at previous Budget Commission meetings. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions you have at this time.
Alright, I'm struck the other end. Questions? I just have a little Cynthia. Okay. Just all around the mind, right? Alright, Jessica, we'll start with you.
And thank you so much for this incredible thorough um presentation with all the ways. I just wanted to give a clarification, which is the, the use of the fund balance we had and anticipated about and then I just give you some advice for, for the process we're on.
Absolutely. So the F Y twenty twenty-three uh budget closed with uh by adding thirty-eight point seven million to the fund balance. Uh, so we grew fund balance by thirty-eight point seven in F Y twenty-three. We started the F Y twenty-four, which is our current year budget, with a fund balance of two hundred and ninety-five uh point three five million dollars. The current budget contemplates using seventy million of that.
We don't think we will because we're tracking ahead of pace in our local revenue collections. We think we'll actually use closer to thirty-five of that, about half. So that means that we'll start next year's budget stronger than what we are currently projected to do just based on our financials. Um, and then that tees us up to using about sixty-nine million going into next year and still maintaining that fund balance of fifteen percent, in alignment with board policy. To, to fifteen, fifteen percent.
Thank you, Cynthia. And my question's actually a follow-on to that. Um, the, I think we're looking at slide twenty-two. Maybe, can we get that back up or? Thank you. Um, I know that, that, that if we have less fund balance used this year as, as we're hoping, and then we use the minimum amount of fund balance proposed in twenty-twenty-five, that we will be right at the fifteen percent tab and fairly significantly under the two months that GFOA suggests. Uh, can you explain, though, the, the far right-hand column? And that, that shows an even lower fund balance by the end of that.
Sure, so the district has been, uh, over the last few months exploring the need for a new ERP system to manage our financials, our H R systems, um, a lot of the technology, uh, that supports our work. If we've, uh, the, but the audit committee meetings, we've had a regular finding or regular, um, conversation around what the system is just not doing for us. Um, so we have started that work. We really want to continue it. We've identified this as a need for the system. But we know that these budget gaps we've been looking at for months and months and months um, have not been easy to close, and that's one where if we had to live without it for one more year, we could. Um, but this, but, so this budget does not include the ERP. If we use fund balance to get it back in, it would take our fund balance down to fourteen point three seven, so we're just showing this as for information purposes. But we're just also looking at other ways that we could potentially, uh, at least get the ERP system started within the current fiscal year. Uh, and if you could just say what ERP means?
Enterprise Resource Planning.
Of course.
Say that into the microphone so the, so the community, the community.
Enterprise Resource Planning. It's, it's your technology systems that support everything.
But to be clear, the, the proposed budget is the one in the next to last column.
That's correct. The current budget, not the, not the far one. The current budget that we're bringing you tonight for tentative adoption does not include ERP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shit. Uh, thank you, Dr. Bracken, um, for, uh, sharing this with us and giving us a thorough, uh, report. For clarification, when is the last time that we updated the ERP system?
I'm gonna have to call.
It's before my time, but approximately two thousand and one. Right, so we're working on it, so.
We are certainly.
I think it's easy to say probably an antiquated system at this point.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain what the, uh, benefits of updating the system would be? And for the record, I want to clarify, and, you know, I'm not a math teacher, but it looked like eight million dollars would be the cost of updating the ERP system. Is that what the difference is?
Yeah, appro- approximately for the, for the implementation, the estimate is, uh, approximately eight million. And we're, we are looking, we're in the, uh, RFP, we're looking at proposals now, so we don't have a definitive number, but that would be an approximate estimate. And you can really think of the ERP as the central nervous system of, of a district system. So you think about, you know, being in good health, having it, you know, updated. It's gonna help our financial efficiency. It's gonna help our human resource processes, so, um, ju- just for, for the systematic, technical running of things in today's modern techn- technological world is gonna be, uh, leaps and bounds over the current systems. And we're kind of playing catch-up with what we have now, Band-Aid approach as we need to, and we understand what we need to do, but we recognize there is the opportunity to modernize.
Do we have to know what the cost was of the ERP system that we procured in, in two thousand and one, I believe you said?
With, yes, uh, I, I can get you those.
And I know the dollars are different now.
Absolutely. Off the top of my head, I don't have that, but we'll certainly provide that information.
Um, thank you so much for the, for the clarification, because I know for a lot of folks, that's gonna be sticker shock when they see that system costs you guys eight million dollars, so I appreciate the clarification on that. Um, there is a increase in the budget of eleven percent for compensation, uh, for teachers and three to five percent for non-teachers. Have we looked at where that might place us in terms of, um, you know, whether or not we're gonna be in the seventy-fifth to a hundred percentile metro, uh, wide?
Yeah, so I know that, and Nicole wants to step up, but I do know that when we were first looking at these, uh, it would place us in the seventy-five, seventy-fifth percentile. I will also say every other district is having these meetings this month to pass a tentative budget. So we'll keep our eyes on, uh, on that as well.
And this is right, we can't say it definite right now, but we have been looking at our neighbors to see what they are offering. Right now, we're still in a good position, but it's not a chance.
Okay. Um, and my understanding is, I'm not gonna name the district, but the district that happens to be paying the best in the metro area currently.
Right now, yeah.
I like that right now. I like that a lot. Um, is somewhere around six to nine percent increases, uh, for their salary. And I was just, you know, I've been asking questions about it, hadn't gotten an update yet. And I'm, I was just curious as to whether or not our eyes are on that. Do we have an appetite to not have to be first to finalize our budget, to figure out where we are so we don't end up, you know, behind because we moved quicker, now we can adjust?
Okay, so that's a loaded question. But, um, yes, we are keeping tabs on what that means, what positions will be within their six to nine percent range. So we're working with that kind of parts to get more details, whether we can make sure that our structure is comparable.
Thank, thank you both so much. And my last question, uh, tax assessors. We've seen, um, you know, I've, I've heard rumblings of APS missing out on about twenty million dollars potentially uh, in tax revenue from, you know, corporate landowners, uh, who are finessing and finagling things with tax assessors here in the city. Is there anything that we can do, uh, as a board, as a district, to put more pressure, uh, on tax assessors here, uh, in Fulton County specifically? Uh, so that we are able to garner the funds and revenue we should, but also be able to provide relief for our seniors and legacy homeowners, um, while these are corporate neighbors may not necessarily be paying their, their full due.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I'll defer to policy or to the board, um, as to how we want to lean in to, uh, even the legislative session. I know that there were bills that were being discussed, maybe as of this past legislative session, that was really prioritizing how to recapture, uh, much more of our commercial. Um, what happens is also, it tends to be that those big businesses have the savvy to know how to appeal and know how to work those processes, which then locks them in at those rates for three years or more, even as we continue to see rates in other areas go up. So there's a lot that can be done in that area, and I do think that that could help us to relieve a lot of this local pressure that we're seeing.
I'll just add to that, that is definitely a part of the conversation that we've seen happen partially at the legislature. Uh, but you have to couple that with the political popularity of offering direct relief to individual homeowners and voters. That is a priority that, um, that is difficult to, to wrestle with. Um, but we're starting to see a little bit of progress in some discussions around the commercial piece of it. Um, but of course, we know that that is a side that we'd be savvy and can be staffed up with advocates on your side as well.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll just real quickly add to the conversation around compensation. So I've brought back up a slide we talked about, I think, at the March Budget Commission meeting, um, just around why it is so hard for us to compete in salaries against our neighboring districts. And it is because we have, um, a much, much lower student-to-staff ratio, which means we're employing far more staff than our other districts. So our pay raises are spread over far more staff. And so, uh, that's why it's so difficult for us to compete. I know the county that you're referencing is very lean. Um, and when it comes to the number of staff that they're paying, and so they're able to extend that, uh, same amount of money concentrated across fewer staff is gonna increase those individuals' pay by significantly more than we can.
I appreciate you sharing that. I, I'm definitely an advocate for smaller class sizes while also compensating our teachers very well. So thank you for adding that.
To balance, yeah. Okay, appreciate. I think my question was. I think my question was answered, um, in terms of, um, as long, I think you were talking about in terms of some of the legislation pieces that we're on a, that are rolling out. I think my question was the impact of the bill and, um, the, I don't know if it's a city bill or a house bill, that would cap home, that would cap home values and a potential impact that that will have on, you know, on, on the district. So I know there's some more information there, but I was just wanting to share a little bit. And, uh, and you'll hear more in our presentation in June. Of course, the governor still has another two days to sign legislation, and so all of that is firm then. Um, with respect to the cap of the growth in property values, um, that is legislation. I think there was a three percent home stay exemption, um, across the state, statewide. There are additional bills, um, there was a local bill that just impacts our seniors here in the city of Atlanta, providing them some protections with respect to APS school taxes. But there is a cap, a ten million dollar cap per year, basically capping how many seniors can benefit from this. That gives us some predictability from here a year, at least we know that there's no moving ten million dollars that will come off the top. Um, but there'll be more specifics provided once everything is signed and finalized by the governor.
So I'll just add to that, the three percent on, uh, it, it, it does function as a, um, a homeowner's exemption, and so the three percent, it caps your growth to three percent of the previous year. Um, but we've done some back-of-the-napkin calculations on that. It could cost the district as much as forty to forty-five million in the first year. So that would be significantly offset if we can recoup from our, um, big businesses, the twenty million that might be under assessed in those areas. And so that's an opportunity for us to still try to balance these things and, and continue to run the district with the revenue that we.
And you think you've got to reckon, uh, just quick, quickly, the thirty-five million, that good, good news? We found thirty-five million dollars in increased revenue. Uh, as I recall, last budget that you proposed, we were still at that one ninety, uh, in fund balance, and then we were drawing downs to, drawing down the, the alpha thirty-five million. So this new thirty-five million, maybe I have these numbers wrong. Where did that, am I right that, that we were there before? And so where did that thirty-five million dollars get allocated to that?
So the FY twenty-four revised, you see a little asterisk there. Um, as of today, we are using seventy million in that little block. But we don't think we're actually gonna use seventy million. We think that we're only gonna use about thirty-five million. Um, so this is already capturing for that. So the thirty-five million you're referencing is in the current FY twenty-twenty-four year. Um, so the budget as of today, as it's balanced, um, from the financials we presented earlier, is using seventy million. Because we're tracking ahead of pace in local, we don't think we'll end the year at July first with that amount. So this is already capturing that.
But that one ninety thirty-three, that's what you brought to us before. You've been trying to hit that fifteen percent cap, which I appreciate. And now we have thirty-five million dollars in new revenue that have come in. So why are we, it, it, that, it sounds like that thirty-five million dollars has been allocated in the twenty-twenty-five budget?
Correct, yes.
Where, where did it go?
So, I might not be understanding the question correctly. Um, so the money didn't go anywhere, so it's for FY twenty-four. So FY, in the current fiscal year, we were proposing to use seventy million dollars worth of fund balance, but because we are getting in more, we don't think we're gonna have to dip into our savings to that amount. So we're actually spending thirty-five million less in the current year, which means that we start next year with a bigger bank account. So our fifteen percent of that bigger bank account allows us to use more fund balance to balance this year's budget.
Okay, may, maybe I'll follow up, uh, because we're, we were at one ninety thirty-three last time you presented.
And, and this slide has, yes, I haven't changed much of anything from our Budget Commission meeting. Um, the Budget Commission materials, we pulled straight forward to this meeting.
Oh, I, I'm sure, I, I just need to get the number straight in my head. Thank you for that. Uh, the twenty-five million dollars in ESSR funding adjustment, are we still contract then to spend down ESSR? So we will not, or we're, we're gonna be on a soft landing for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Uh, yes, let me try to get back to the budget adjustment slide. Um, so part of this, um, I think last year we ended up bringing in an adjustment at this time that was about nineteen million. It's just the way that we roll forward funding for these multi-year budgets. We have to forecast pretty early in the process what we think we will have available for the next fiscal year. But then, once we do close out and accruals and all of that, we end up having, of being able to accrue back significant funds. So this adjustment is the function of those two pieces. It's splitting apart what was remaining of the ESSR funds into the appropriate fiscal year. So some accrued back to FY twenty-three, some of this will roll forward to FY twenty-five because we do have three months of next year that we can continue to spend ESSR funds, and date is September thirtieth. So, uh, I believe we presented to you at the April Budget Commission meeting that we'll be, uh, taking about fourteen million of this adjustment forward into next year to spend down. But all, a hundred percent of the funds are allocated and we'll try to spend it.
Thank you for that. And I, and I, look, I, I know you guys did a lot of hard work on the budget. Eleven percent increase in salary for our teachers, that's meaningful. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate the reduction in central office, uh, expenses driving that towards the schools, the investment in literacy. Uh, so thank you for your hard work. I know the school's uneasy, and, uh, I, I feel it's good for the results for our kids.
Thank you so much, Ray. Oh, James Adam, everybody. Hi, Katie. All right. Thank you, Dr. Bracken and your team. Just like, um, Kim said, I know you all have worked really hard on this budget, and I appreciate my colleagues' questions. Um, wanna lift up, you know, the, the counselor, the one counselor-funded position that schools will get, um, which is very important. We also know that there are, our schools obviously are different, um, and schools that are large and have still a lot of need. Um, we know that holding back fifty percent of the reserves, um, that is going to be felt. Do you, right now, um, are there any ways we think we might be able to adjust to the, to support needs that come up due to that holdback, considering we have, like, the town of Jackson that are very large? Um, and it will look different for them in terms of some of the additional funds that have been spent at the elementary school level. Um, can you speak to me about that right now?
Sure, absolutely. Um, so with the, um, this is kind of a, a way back, but when we were talking about our budget, um, adjustments, our budget proposals for the Student Success Funding Formula, S S F, um, part of the proposal was to increase that base weight. Um, and so FY twenty-twenty-five, the base weight for S S F is about a hundred and forty-one dollars more per student. At our high schools, the change in per pupil came out to about one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars more per student. Um, and at the lowest, it was eight hundred and fifty-one dollars per student. Um, so all that to say, on average, the budgets went up for our high schools, on average, about one point two million. So they're receiving more dollars than they did in FY twenty-twenty-four. So the fifty percent holdback is a reduction of an increase. It's not dipping into our FY twenty-four base allocations. It's a reduction of increases that they would have gotten in FY twenty-five. So that's the first, um, just context that I want to set us in. The second thing that I'll talk about, we shared with principals when we, uh, discussed this reduction that we were gonna do everything we could to offset, um, the impacts of that, post-planning, post-budgeting. Uh, it's going to be felt, even if it was new money for next year. And so we did release the Title I funds that were available. So seven of our nine high schools received their Title I offsets. For most of those schools, it nearly or completely offset the change in allocations. We did add, also add, um, a new weight for schools this year in S S F. That was the capacity weight. The two schools you mentioned did receive additional funding, about two hundred and fifty-four thousand, a hundred and forty-four thousand for that. On average, the, um, S S F holdback, the reduction to the schools, was ninety-four thousand. So the schools, yes, it is a large amount, but again, ninety-four thousand from a fifteen million dollar budget is equivalent to thousand from a ten thou, I mean, a ten million, uh, or one million dollar budget. So those offsets feel similarly. Um, the last thing I would just say is that the guidance we've given to the schools is to look Um, the last thing I would just say is that the guidance we've given to the schools is to look at what the central office looked at. So, we did see travel kind of explode post-pandemic. Um, and so, we're asking for every principal for our central office to look at those travel budgets, try to get leaner there. We've also requested that they look at those redundancies similar to, similarly to central office. So, if they are contracting or they're getting, um, purchased services for something at the school, that maybe we offer in the central office. But maybe they weren't happy with the services or how they were receiving it in the past. We're kind of forcing that conversation again to go back to, um, those offices and say, this is what we need. This is what we're expecting and we can get leaner in some of those purchase services and contracts that were, um, that were working outside of the district. The final thing is, we did have two or three schools that reached out to us and just said, this is harder than we can work through. And for those schools, we're absolutely holding their hand. We're walking them through it. We're getting creative in how we balance those budgets. And we'll do that throughout the course of the year. If we see that they're starting to overspend or if they're on track, um, in the second semester to overspend some of their non-personnel, we'll lean in at that point and help out as well.
Thank you very much for that. And again, all the work you've done around reductions here at central office and then just turning over every stone and. Getting as lean as possible to make sure that we're really focused on students' needs and laying down the realities for our system and where we are right now. Um, and of course, increasing educator and staff pay, which is critically important. Um, and I look forward to the meeting on the sixteenth. And to, to dive in, one last question. Our deadline by this date to adopt the budget is June thirtieth?
Yes, so we have to have a budget, a balanced budget adopted and in place for July first.
Great, thank you. Thanks, thank you for asking our question. So, thank you so much, Dr. Bracken, as always. Thank you, Battle.
Thank you, Dr. Bracken. It is now, uh, it is now time for us to engage in board goal one, monitoring interim goal one point one and one point two. At this time, I've asked, whenever fall into.
It's a lot of words, huh? It's long, I survived.
It is now time for us to engage in goal goal monitoring for interim goals one point one and one point two. In term goal one point one, identifies the percentage of students in grades K through one experiencing difficulty in reading. Measured by the MAP reading influencing foundational skills test subset universal screener flag. In term goal one point two, identifies the percentage of students in grades two through eight. At a Georgia milestone ELA integrated grade assessment achievement level of proficiency or above. As as, as estimated by the MAP growth reading assessment. I would like to take, I would like to take time to review the norms and expectations for a monitoring session. As Dr. Battle takes us through the monitoring report, she will discuss the district's progress towards meeting in term goal one point one. The percentage of students in grades K through one experiencing difficulty in reading on the district universal screening assessment. Will decrease from forty-nine point seven percent in May of twenty-twenty-two to forty-three point seven percent in May of twenty-twenty-four. And the interim goal one point two, the percentage of students in grades two through eight with a projected Georgia milestone achievement level of proficiency. Or above, an ELA reading on the district universal screening assessment will increase from thirty-three point nine percent in May twenty-two. To thirty-nine point nine percent in May twenty-four. Board member, member comments and questions will be focused on creating and engaging dialogue with the superintendent. What are the factors that need to current levels of achievement? Did the district make progress towards the spring school year twenty-twenty-four goal? Why or why not? What strategies and resources worked well or did not work well? What changes and adjustments need to be made? Will the district require additional resources to meet this goal? And what support do you need from the board to be successful? Please hold your questions until Dr. Battle has had a chance to walk through the entire report. Board member questions or comments should not be evaluative. Tell the superintendent what to do. Suggest administrative actions, reference data that is not in this report. If we stray from our norms or expectations, I or Jennifer will remind us of the norms and expectations. And ask that you rephrase your question to align with our norms and expect, expectations. Dr. Battle? Please, please walk us through the monitoring report.
Thank you, Board Member Battle. First, I would like to provide some background and context. Interim goal one point one identifies the percentage of students in grades K through one experiencing difficulty in reading measured by the MAP read influencing fundamental skills. Test sub, subtype, universal screener flag. The universal screener flag identifies students who may be experiencing difficulty in reading. But does not diagnose students with a specific reading disability such as dyslexia. Interim goal one point two identifies the percentage of students in grades two through eight. On the Georgia milestone ELA integrated grade assessment achievement level of proficiency or above, as estimated by the MAP growth reading assessment. Scores of efficiency or greater are considered high achievement and are well above the state average. Our interim goals are designed to help us monitor progress toward our actual board goal. It is important to note that our interim goals will begin at the close of the twenty, twenty-twenty-four school year, which is this school year. When reading this report, we need to reconsider the following factors. This data only represents a single snapshot in time. And finally, we should expect to see our scores vary throughout the year due to the change in content. Now, I would like to call your attention to figure one. Figure one shows us the board goal one. The percentage of students in grades three through eight scoring proficiency or above in reading, as measured by the Georgia milestone, will increase from thirty-one point two. In August of twenty-twenty-two and to be determined in August of twenty-twenty-six. The board has expressed its desire to adjust the annual target for board goal one. Looking at the legend, the blue line shows our current adopted target line. The orange line shows our actual level of performance. The purple line shows our pre-based line. This figure shows thirty-three point three percent of students in grades three through eight scoring at proficiency or higher. On the school year twenty-twenty-three Georgia milestone ELA assessment. This is a two point one percentage gain from school year twenty-twenty-two. Our current annual goal requires a three point eight five percentage point gain. I would like to call your attention to figure two. This figure shows the percentage of students in grades K one experiencing difficulty in reading. On a district universal screening assessment, um, now. We want, we want you to remember, this is a target in which we want the percentage to decrease. The blue line in the figure shows our target line and the orange line shows our actual current level of progress. The capital N shows us the number of students experiencing difficulty in reading. This is a number behind the percentage. Looking at the orange line, we can see that twenty-four point eight percent of kindergarten and first grade students are experiencing difficulty in reading. Based on our universal screening assessment. Our current data shows significant decrease in the percentage of students experiencing difficulty in reading. The decrease in the percentage of students experiencing difficulty in reading can be attributed to the NWEA changing the screener outcome threshold. From twenty percent to ten percent. In addition, the weights of the tested domain areas also change the calculation. According, according to the NWEA, this change was made to help educators better identify students with the highest needs. A link to the NWEA research update has been included in the monitoring report. Due to the change, in twenty-twenty-four school year scores are not compatible with the scores from prior administration. We're working collaborative across APS divisions to craft new interim goals to help us monitor our progress toward board goal one. This would give us an opportunity to examine other data points such as Lexile scores. Now, we're going to look at figure three. This figure shows us the percentage of students in grades two through eight scoring at an estimated achievement. Level at proficiency above ELA and reading on the district universal screening assessment. As a reminder, the blue line represents our current target line and the orange is our actual current level of performance. The level shows N shows, the lowercase n shows us the number of students that have demonstrated proficiency. Our interim goals are designed to help us monitor progress towards our actual board goal. Our current data shows that thirty-five percent of students are projected to score at proficiency or higher on the Georgia milestone ELA assessment. Looking at the orange line, we can see that that is a one point one percentage points higher than spring of twenty-twenty-two scores. And a negative point five percentage points lower than the spring of twenty-twenty-three MAP results. We need to consider that all administrators, administrations provide a different snapshot in time. And of course, content is taught at different times based on the district curriculum. Looking at our overall progress, I would like to call your attention to the color legends, which shows the state, the status level. Red line below, yellow developing, neon green on track, dark green exceeding. Based on the most recent data, it is available to us, the low target for, um, board goal one. Our progress for interim goal one point one is to be determined, and this is due to the business change in the universal screener flag calculation. Which makes this year's data incom, incom, incompatible to prior years. And we were working on developing a new interim goal to measure our progress towards goal one this summer. Looking at interim goal one point two, we are four point nine percentage points shorter, short of our spring twenty-four target, which puts us below target. Now, we're going to look at table one, which shows us the percentage of students experiencing reading difficulties in grade, in the grade level. In the interest of transparency, I would like to remind everyone that NWEA changed the screener outcome threshold from twenty percent to ten percent. And the way of the test domain areas are making twenty-twenty-four MAP read influencing data incompatible to prior years. This is why our current data is showing a significantly fewer students experiencing reading difficulty. Once again, our current scores are not compatible to the MAP read influencing administration. This change is designed to help educators more effectively identify students' needs for remediation of the low grade level versus those who need support on grade level. Ultimately, it would help us find the right supports to be individual students learning needs. As a reminder, the denominator includes all K one students that took the fall MAP assessment. When looking at kindergarten, twenty-one point four percent of students are experiencing reading difficulty. When looking at first grade, it's twenty-eight point five percent of the spirits of reading difficulties. Now, we're going to take a look at table two, which shows the percentage of K one students experiencing reading difficulty by subgroup. Even with changing the screener outcome threshold from twenty percent to ten percent, we can still see the achievement gap between white, Hispanic and black students. The data also shows that our seniors learners with dis, and students with disability will require extensive support to meet their literacy needs. Table three contains clustered level data. Honoring our soft guide lines, we recommend that we keep our discussion at the district level. Figure four shows us a projected elementary Georgia milestone proficiency by grade level. All grade elementary schools show gains when compared to the baseline of twenty-twenty-two. Grades three, four and five are showing one year decline between, grade levels between spring twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty, twenty-four. We need to remember that this is only the data, it's a ballpark prediction, prediction. Figure five shows the projected middle school ELA Georgia milestone proficiency by grade level. Sixth grade shows a two percent gain in projected proficiency when comparing to twenty-two baseline with the twenty-twenty-four. We see a decline when comparing twenty-three to twenty-four. Seventh grade projected proficiency in spring twenty-four increased by one percent compared to twenty twenty-three. But held steady when compared from twenty-twenty-two to the baseline here of spring twenty twenty-four. An eighth grade projected efficiency declined three percent points when compared from twenty-two to twenty-four. Once again, in honoring the soft guide lines, we recommend that we keep our dis, our discussion at the district level. And now, we're going to take a look at table four, which shows the ELA Georgia milestone assessment projected proficiency by subgroup. As a reminder, the denominator includes all students within a subgroup that took the spring MAP assessment. The all students group shows a decrease of plus one point one percentage points when compared from twenty-four to twenty-two. And over half of the students show a slight gain when comparing twenty-four to the baseline of twenty-two. As a reminder, we expect to see that our scores will vary throughout the year due to the change in content. Spring MAP was given in early March, where there was still a significant amount of content to teach. We expect our teachers to use the spring MAP data to plan and inform instruction to meet individual students' learning needs the weeks before the Georgia milestone. Now, it's time to look at our next steps. We will need to begin our collaboration to craft a new interim goal for goal one. We need to continue to develop our capacity to use formative assessment data such as MAP to provide differentiated instruction that meet the needs of all of our learners. Based on their readiness. We need to continue to work, build a leadership capacity so that teachers are provided with ongoing, high-quality feedback. Will be essential to ensure that leaders are monitoring and supporting, that best practices are implemented consistently in every classroom. APS would need the board's support in the following areas. Ensure adequate resources to support our strategies such as financial support. For the instructional materials, professional learning, we can provide it through coaching both by the district and school level. The district is in the process of hiring readers or leaders coordinator and specialists that will support the readers or leaders school-based instructional coaches in every elementary school. Teachers at full-time parents will receive a stipend applying, completing the first four cycles in October and the last four cycles in May of twenty-twenty-five. Additional resources will be purchased to support students' learning based on the science arena. This completes my soft report, and I will not be answering any questions. I want to get it.
Shut up. Really, shut up.
Gotcha.
That was really good. That was my favorite part of the whole night. I like that word, that's really good. All right, uh, let's turn down here. Just tell me who wants to go, so I can listen. Katie?
Hi.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Hold on, wait, so sorry, just I'm trying to get a list. Anyone down here? You're saying, that's it? Okay, great. Oh, wait, it's Katie, it's you. All right, I have questions. Um, thank you for that report, and I know this was different because we can't compare some of the data. Um, and I just, you know, we can talk about that more in a minute if we need to, to make sure that's clear, um, to the public and people, um, who are definitely going to have questions. But I want to actually, um, look at middle school data, and I did it in one of the, um, readers or leaders, um, sessions, yay. A Sherry Forrest did an awesome job, and it's such an important, um, obviously initiative and the work that's happening on the ground. You can tell that people know that is what's happening, that's expectation of the school, um, what support their students should be getting. So, one of, uh, you and your team for the leadership in that area, making things happen on the ground. Um, but yeah, seventh grade, looking at spring, now, um, our data for estimated middle school Georgia milestone ELA achievement. Seventh grade, what are we doing to support seventh graders, looking at where they're estimated to be on the Georgia milestones?
Yes, yes, great question. And we know that we have concentrated on elementary school, but we also are doing work in middle schools. Middle school, I'm thinking of Ms. Brown, we're doing, um, a lot of writing with middle school, but more than that, going forward this summer, we are, we are. And the minute we get milestone assessments, our rollout next year for middle school will be students that are performing below proficiency. Would have an individual plan that we're going to work on that this summer. We're, we're hashing it out right now. I've been meeting with, um. Tommy, Erica, Yvonda, Sherry, and the team, they will have individual plans because we realize we're sending, we know that we're sending students to middle school. That are not proficient in reading, and we know if, we don't get them proficient by the time they get to high school, they're more likely to drop out or cause disruption. Um, in our school, so we're going to meet that. So, more information to come about that, but, uh, this year, uh, Ms. Brown and her team, they were working on a lot of writing. But we know it's going to take more than writing. We're going to have to teach our students to read, so we're going to create individual plans for those students. And that we're rolling out, um, to get in the next school year.
Right, that's extremely helpful to hear and knowing that that will require additional resources, um, as we move forward, you know, the budget right now. Because that is part of our goal, is three through eight, which I think is very broad, um, what that's going to require. Well, in terms of those students who are prepared for high school, um, and they could, of course, continuing the work, um, in elementary school. Yep, so, thank you for that. You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Seater.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, and certainly marrying this with the conversation we just had, uh, it's so glad to see us make an investment literacy in this current budget because we have so much work to, so, so it's clear how much work we have to do. It's good to see a twelve million dollar investment in the, in the FY twenty-five budget. Uh, two questions. One is, do we have a sense of what the right measure we should be using is? We're talking about MAP, we're talking about milestones, we're talking about Lexiles, they're all sending us different signals, uh, and there, you know, MAP's at fifty-five percent of this, you know, uh, experiencing difficulty. Milestones are in the low thirties, I think Lexiles are probably around there too. Do you have a sense, does your team have a sense of what measure we should be using?
I'm gonna let you come up because I'm mad, I'm sorry.
Alright, we want to keep in mind that our interim goals are designed to help us monitor our progress to our actual board goal, which is, uh, milestones proficiency. And the way we do that is first, our interim goal one point one, we're looking at that's K-one students, remember it's a different group, we're looking at them early because they eventually will be in those tested grade levels. And we're looking, using that universal screener flag to find those students who have those fundamental problems in reading to address them early, um, in the hopes of moving them towards proficiency. So, that's, that's one piece of, of, of the puzzle. The other piece is the projected proficiency that we look at grades two through eight, and that has been spot on at the district level, it's very close. And in most cases, math actually underestimates, it's a conservative measure. Uh, we are using pre-pandemic norms, and we do test early in March, um, so it does provide us a challenge. Uh, but it has been extremely accurate, um, particularly at the district level. Uh, so for the standpoint of interim roles that are predictive of our milestones performance, we do believe we have the right, um, assessment resources in place.
Okay, so not Lexiles.
No, we're not using, we're not using Lexiles because Lexiles are not part of the overall board goal. Uh, now, if the board, of course, um, were to amend their goals and move towards Lexiles, that is something we can consider. But also looking at, um, re-crafting our interim goals, um, you know, this summer, Lexiles is certainly something we should probably discuss. Um, there, you know, there are many measures, um, that we could discuss such as writing as well, because the ELA test is more than just reading. Reading, ELA conventions, and writing. So, there's a lot, uh, quite a few data points that we need to discuss and come to consensus on.
Sounds like we do that at, at, at our retreats, I think the state's moving to Lexiles, and so I want to make sure that we're, we're, uh...
So, the state has had Lexiles in place for a long time within the readiness, um, component of the CCRPI, the College and Career Readiness Performance Index for those non-educators. Uh, the one change that has happened previously, in order to get points in the literacy indicator, a student had to be in the middle of the Common Core Lexile Stretch Band, which is a very high Lexile. That was changed last year and approved by USAID, so if a student reaches grade level, then they earn points, um, in that, um, literacy indicator. Um, that, but that, of course, will probably serve to slightly raise the scores for, for all districts, I would imagine.
So, we can, and I don't want to get us in the weeds, but I think we, we have several measures, and so I think we need to, we need to, as we go through this retreat process to get really clear about what our true north is, because I think we're getting some different signals from different measures. Second question I had was, um, just, you know, as you look at, uh, figure, uh, table four, uh, yeah, table four, if you look year over year, I mean, we're down in almost every subgroup. Uh, is that, is that an implementation dip as we move into leaders or readers, is, uh, to our, to our reading investment, would you, is there a reason why you, why you really, really across the board, every subgroup lost ground? And is that because we're moving to this new system? Is that your, your sense?
I would, I'm thinking that we are definitely, those eight schools, if we break those eight schools out, we should see some movement, but it is a total mind shift when you're, um, doing this science of reading. It is totally taking the, a, a, a change. I mean, I've been in this business thirty years, thirty-plus years, and going through that training. I mean, I did some things wrong, as an educator, so I think, um, I think that may weigh in as well. But again, I think it's that, that concentration, I, I was talking with the team, we can do it, but we gotta make sure we monitor that as well, because when you change, you gotta make sure people just don't go back and close their door and do what they've always done. So, we're all talking the same language, doing the same thing, going to the buildings, looking for the same thing, as well as our associates holding our principles, um, accountable to evaluate their teachers, and everyone's talking the same language. I think we'll get to that point. I mean, we, we know it works, we've seen it in, in, in neighboring districts across the country. We truly teach the science of reading, students will make gains.
Thank you. So. Awesome. That's hard.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, yes, if, if it's, if that's alright. But I, I just wanted to, uh, expound my inquiry on what Ken was talking about as to what would be the benefits of utilizing Lexile as opposed to, uh, the MAP assessments. Um, I have my own thoughts, but I'm just curious as, you know, as to where we are as an administration on that, especially as we start to, you know, review our goals and then potentially start moving the needle forward to be more aligned with what the state is doing potentially.
So, MAP does produce Lexile measures as well. That produces many reports, um, so part of our discussion this summer is do we want to look at the MAP Lexiles? But we do need to consider that different assessments do produce slightly different Lexiles. Lexiles are not gonna be as, as precise. Looking at projected proficiency, I think why many districts, including our own, have chose to look at projected proficiency is because it's a projected range, because you're not looking at a precise score, you're looking at a range of scores. And as you well know, within each performance level of Georgia milestones, there's a wide range of scale scores, um, particularly at that level one, which is extremely low, um, and can actually grow quite a bit, still not break out of that, that level one for, for multiple years. Uh, just to be clear on that.
And you also may mention to some challenges with testing in March. Okay, do you mind giving a little more context on that?
Yeah, so, um, the purpose for testing in March, the MAP testing in March, is that we wanted our teachers to have the most recent data to plan and form instruction before the milestones. Um, and after about ninety days, you do need to use the data. Uh, but MAP, MAP contains something called the MAP Learning Continuum, which in a way flexibly groups students by domain areas, so that you can very well pinpoint exactly what a student's learning need is by the domain area. So, if we're looking at winter MAP, by the time you get to March, that data really is almost too old to use. So, as an instructional planning tool for unit planning, we want, we wanted our teachers to have the most recent data in those weeks before milestones. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our work, sort of, I, for today.
Alright, thank you everyone for your reports and all that very great thorough information and all those positive data points that we love to our community here as well. Is there a need to enter into executive session? Uh, yes, the board needs to discuss land, legal, personnel, and student matters. Is there a motion to enter into executive session to discuss student discipline, personnel, legal, real estate matters? Second, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, we will now go into executive session.
Hello, I am Alfred Shimi Brooks, board member representing at-large seat seven. Thank you for your attendance this morning. There are several recognitions I'd like to share with you. May first, twenty twenty-four is recognized as National School Principals' Day. We are grateful for the leadership and guidance these individuals provide day in and day out, often sacrificing time with their own families to ensure students have a quality educational experience. Mark your calendars for the week of May sixth to tenth. During this week, we will celebrate and honor our wonderful teachers. To teach is to touch a life forever. Let us all be sure to thank the teachers in our lives for their dedicated and commendable service. Teachers endure many personal sacrifices to ensure students receive the best education possible, and it's all done from the heart. We are incredibly thankful for each and every one of them. On May eighth, we celebrate National School Nurse Day. This is a day to acknowledge the essential role that staff members play in ensuring the health and well-being of our students and our schools. Your quick action during emergencies and your ongoing day-to-day care are invaluable. Thank you for your service. On May ninth, we recognize Children's Mental Health Awareness Day to raise awareness of the importance of every child's mental health. It's imperative we educate and take care of the whole child. May eighteenth to twenty-fourth is recognized as National Charter School. During this week, raise awareness of charter schools and highlight parents' options to take advantage of the charter opportunity. Thank you for your attention, and this concludes my remarks.
Greetings APS families. I am Dr. Danielle Battle, your interim superintendent. Whether you are online or in person, I want to thank you for attending our May board meeting. Traditionally, May is filled with celebrations. The end of testing, another successful school year, graduations, and one celebration that recognizes those who make all the other events possible, Teacher Appreciation Week. From May sixth to the reason each one of us is who we are today. Our teachers work tirelessly to educate, inspire, and support our students, and consistently go above and beyond the call of duty to ensure their students' success. I'm honored to stand before you to express sheer gratitude and appreciation for each one of our teachers. You are appreciated not just during Teacher Appreciation Week, but every day. Make sure you take time to thank the teachers in your and your child's lives. Because of them, we are. Thank you for your attention, and this concludes my remarks.
Right.